May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Mayor Robert?
Here.
Do you have the quorum?
I have one speaker card for public forum for this meeting. Oh, someday I'll get it right. So, as I was saying, I have one speaker card for public forum for this meeting. Paul Gregoriev, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. My comment is going to be brief because I understand our city manager is going to make this part of his report which is coming up. My comment concerns the automated license plate reader project, and I just wanted to be absolutely sure what the time horizon was for consideration or reconsideration of that proposal. And I and several others have very strong objections to the adoption of this technology by the city, and since we believe that the listening session in August will now be canceled as a result of the audit being done by the state, we'd like to know when there will be any other formal consideration of this proposal by the city. Thank you very much.
Bob, do you have a response?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public, I can make the comment now. I was planning to make a comment, and actually a recommendation really, on this subject under CM comments. So, yes, several months ago, we had kind of an introductory meeting here at one of the council, regular council meetings, on the concept of automatic license plate readers as a tool for law enforcement. Your council received a short presentation, we took some public comment. The conclusion of that meeting was direction to us to come back and hold a special meeting. I think the direction then was to try to schedule it in July, come back, a special meeting devoted to that subject, make sure we brought certain people, advertised that meeting, and did certain homework, and came back prepared for that meeting, and we got direction to do that. We then were not able to schedule the meeting in July, and it looked like a meeting was going to be scheduled in August. I don't know if we had officially calendared that yet, but it is possible that the word had got out to the public that that was the plan, was to have that meeting as directed in August. A couple of weeks ago, it came to my attention, actually, Councilmember Reddick brought it to my attention, she had come across an article, an interesting article, that the state had decided to do an audit of the use of automatic license plate readers in several cities, or counties maybe. Sacramento was one, Fresno's one, the third one is escaping me, maybe Los Angeles itself. And so, I then read the article, and it occurred to me immediately, and it probably occurred to Councilmember Reddick and the rest of you, if you read that article, that it would kind of make obvious sense for us to wait for the findings of that audit before we move forward, if at all. Because certainly, if we were to have any kind of a community meeting and dive deeper into the use, and the pros and the cons, et cetera, the question of that audit would certainly come up, and everyone would want to know what was being found out from that audit. So, that made very obvious sense, and so it's my recommendation, I have certainly talked to a few people and said, hey, this makes sense, but we have not done it officially, and so I think we should do that tonight by letting you know and letting the public know that that's our recommendation, to put that off until we receive the results of that audit. The newspaper article said it would take seven months, so to the speaker's point, looking for a time certain, I don't know if we can give that, that seven months could easily turn into eight months, nine months, a year, and then the question will probably be how much of that audit is actually released, and how much of it is actually even beneficial to us in terms of deciding whether this is something that we should use in the community or not. So, it could be seven months, it could be a year, we'll bring it back at some point when we have that, and we'll provide, the first thing we'll do is make sure that that audit is provided to everyone, so everyone can see what came out of that. I'm sure it'll make the news, so you'll hear about it as it goes, but that would be our recommendation, is to put this subject off indefinitely, at least until we hear the results of the state audit.
Yeah, and so it might take seven months for Elaine Howell to do the work, but, you know, it would have to be heard in the audit committees, so I'm guessing it would be, that would mean the next legislative session, so, yeah, it could conceivably be a year, I think, yeah.
Thank you, Bob. Proclamations and presentations, we had none to give out at this meeting, but if you had just come from the celebration of the city's 60th anniversary, you would have seen that the city received at least three proclamations, or from various elected officials, and it was a really nice event, so I'm glad I went. Want to say something?
I thought it was a beautiful event, really well organized, city staff did a great job, and it seemed to me on pretty short notice, too, it seems like once I found out about it, here it was, and it was all, you know, battened down, it was great. And I think it looked like about 200 people or more, so it was very well attended and good vibes, you know, good feelings.
Yeah, what I really liked was seeing Eddie Andrino, and, you know, the first mayor, and hearing Larkin talk about her father, John Carter, so giving a little bit of the history of Half Moon Bay, which I don't think a lot of people know, so, it was fun.
It was very sweet.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you had a chance to read the news articles that were displayed there, and there was actually the minutes of the first meeting of the council, it was July 15, 1959, and here we are, July 16, 60 years and one day later.
I have no announcements of community activities and community service. Catherine, are you, can you report out from recent closed session meetings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, the council met in closed session this evening at 4:30. I have no reportable actions as to that meeting, but I will mention that we discussed three items. The first was conference with real property negotiators regarding acquisition of Senator Seward easements for the city's planned Ocean Colony Pump Station and Forest Main Rehabilitation Project. The second item was a conference regarding litigation regarding the sewer authority mid-coastside JPA agreement, and the third item was conference with legal counsel regarding litigation that was filed by the Ecological Rights Foundation versus the sewer authority mid-coastside. So, no reportable actions as to those three items, but I did want to take the opportunity to report regarding the resolution of litigation against the city in a case that we discussed in closed session, although it's been several months. This is the case of Marquez versus the State of California at All. This was a case arising out of a tragic incident with an individual who crossed Highway One in front of Sam's Chowder House and was struck by a CHP officer. The city was dismissed from this action because this is not, was not within the city's jurisdiction. So, the case will proceed as to the state defendants, but the city is no longer party to that one. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Catherine. City manager updates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We have three short updates. The first is Chief of Police Saul Lopez is here. I just saw him walk in. He must have stayed a little longer at the festivities, but he is here to give just a short report of our past July 4 activities, and just kind of how that went, and give a report about, you know, how that went, and the good and the bad, so.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As we previously spoke about 4th of July efforts for the sheriff's office here in the city of Half Moon Bay, we responded to 18 calls for illegal fireworks, we conducted additional patrols at Poplar Beach along with the security company that was hired by the city, so we coordinated efforts with them, and it was very effective. We also implemented the electronic signboard at the entrance to Poplar Beach and along 92 as well. Overall, on the coast, 150 people were contacted with, or in the presence of fireworks, not to say that they were actively engaging in that, but they were observing fireworks. Four people were sighted that evening within the city limits, and we confiscated 80 pounds of illegal fireworks, which was relative to other cities that actually do allow fireworks to take place in their cities. We did implement this year a unmarked, basically an undercover vehicle with two deputies, as I promised the council that I would do, and they were very effective driving up to certain locations where there was groups of people with fireworks. The fireworks, once they were seized, they were turned over to Cal Fire for whatever they do with the fireworks, they usually, they usually throw them away, so. And the one point that I do want to make, I'm sure a lot of community members today noticed quite a bit of law enforcement activity, so we do have a saturated traffic enforcement program that rotates around the county. This program consists of numerous motor officers and also police vehicles from around the county that participate, and the sheriff's office is also a member of this program. So, they started this morning in Pacifica and worked their way down to Half Moon Bay, and from what I understand, it appears that they sighted over 150 folks. But again, the campaign is not about enforcement, it's more about education and awareness, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council.
Are sparklers considered an illegal firework? You don't see sparklers anymore. What happened to sparklers?
Technically, they are. I'll leave it at that. But I do know that some retailers sell some form of those type of fireworks that are, I guess, able to be ignited within the home, that don't have a flame to them.
I think, I want to congratulate Saul and his team and our city staff for, you know, putting together rapid response, or actually, it wasn't response, it was proactive, a proactive plan to deal with a fourth, and it seems like people were generally happy with the outcome. I mean, next door was relatively quiet compared to recent years, I think that's a good sign, and I just want to say thanks.
And I second that.
I just have a question. You handed out 400 citations today?
No, from what I understand, they handed out over 150, but that's from Pacifica down to Half Moon Bay.
I see. During the Fourth?
No, just today in enforcement. On 4th of July, we only handed out four citations where deputies did observe people engaging actively with fireworks.
And these citations that were handed out today had to do with fireworks?
No, ma'am.
There were traffic violations?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Saul.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Mayor, Michaela McMahon is going to make a short presentation on pilot project and a grant that we received. It's actually an item on your agenda to accept that grant, consent calendar item 1H, but I will turn it over to Michaela.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and Half Moon Bay community. I'm excited to announce that the city of Half Moon Bay was selected to receive grant funding for a pilot project through the San Mateo County Office of Sustainability. The proposed project will allow collaborative efforts between the city of Half Moon Bay with our three partners, ALAS Senior Co-Siders and the Youth Leadership Institute, in preparation of the city's climate action and adaptation plan. This partnership will allow for focused outreach to the three outlined communities, allow for organization capacity building, and identify key leaders to further engage the entire Half Moon Bay community as we prepare to work towards the city's plan. There is an item tonight on your consent calendar that would allow the city manager to execute this agreement, which also provides additional background and details regarding the Community Adaptation Pilot Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. You want to say something?
I was going to pull item H because I wanted to hear a presentation, so you saved that. I think this is a great proposal that staff has put together. I mean, it's really, it's very different from things that we've done in the past. We're putting together groups that, you know, we haven't had a lot of, you know, contact with, and inviting them into the process to help plan. I think it's great, so, thanks for that.
I have a question. The money comes from the county to the city, but must go to those three agencies. Is that the way it works?
Yes, so similar to the CSFA grant, we are going to revert the money back into our community organizations and let them decide how the money should be spent to not only build their organization, but also to connect to that community. So, we'll be executing agreements with those three organizations after our agreement with the county.
Thank you very much. I think this is really a great step forward.
If I could, John Doughty, we wanted to take this opportunity, Michaela is going to be leaving us for law school in mid-August, and her last day will be August 2, and so we won't have another council meeting between now and then, so we just wanted to acknowledge, Jessica's just loved having Michaela, we've had her for a very short period of time, but found her to be an incredible worker and incredible asset, and we're going to miss her greatly, and we just wanted, as staff, to take the opportunity to really thank her and ask the council to thank her and the community for her service to the city in her fairly short period of time and everything with that, and wish her well in her studies at Hastings, so, thank you.
Can you come back for youth academy?
Yeah. Yeah, of course, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. It was really an honor to have worked with you, yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more item, segues quite nicely, actually. I have to admit, yes, since I've been here in eight months, one thing I've noticed about the city among a lot of things is that we have an incredible internship program here, and Michaela is a shining example of that. So, as Michaela moves on to go to law school in bigger and better things, we are here tonight to introduce the next wave of interns, and so I will turn it over to Karen Decker to introduce our new interns.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Karen Decker, I'm a senior management analyst with the city manager's office. Our summer internship program is well underway, and I'm excited to introduce you to the three newest interns to our program. First off, we have Ryan Anderson. Ryan Anderson, Ryan is interning with our Public Works Department. He comes to us from Cal Poly, majoring in city and regional planning. Ryan is a twice-nominated international collegiate scholar, and when he's not taking classes, or interning, or being nominated, he finds time to coach basketball. Welcome, Ryan. And then, next up, we have Miriam Salazar. Miriam is going to be interning with the city manager's office. She's taking classes at Sonoma State and the College of San Mateo, majoring in sociology. And Miriam's actually worked with one of our local nonprofits and collaborators that Michaela just mentioned, ALAS, and she's helped K through 12th grade students with college assistance and with life skills, and Miriam actually interned for our finance department a couple of years ago, and then wanted to round out her experience, learning more about what the city manager's office does, so we're excited to have her back. And then finally, we have Arsh Hothi, also interning for the city manager's office. Arsh is going to be starting Cal Poly, or, I'm sorry, Arsh is starting at UC Berkeley in the fall, majoring in economics and data science, and he just recently graduated high school at James Logan, and has already co-founded an organization called Voice for All that is really taking the lead in civil liberties issues in underrepresented communities. He's also the recipient of the Barack Obama Volunteer Service Award, so really excited to have Arsh on the team. So, I know I'm not alone in saying that I find their promise and their passion contagious and inspiring, and I was excited to introduce them to you. Thank you.
You're not alone.
I'd like to say, if any of the three interns would like to have a coffee or a lunch with anybody on council, I know we'd all be very happy to sit down and talk to you about our point of view, or learn something from you.
Thank you all so much. It's really going to be a great collaboration. On the consent calendar, I have one request to pull items C and D. Anybody else want to pull any item? No? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Items 1A, warrants for the month of May 2019. 1B, professional services agreement for the BikeWay Connectivity Project North, that's CIP project number 619. Item 1E, agreement with Vavronek, Trine, Day &amp; Company, LLP for non-audit services. Item 1F, construction contract award for the 2019 Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. Item 1G, citizens' option for public safety grant program fiscal year 1920. And item 1H, acceptance of funding from the county of San Mateo for Community Adaptation Pilot Project grant funding.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, we have public speaker for items 1C and 1D. Paul Gregoriev, please.
Again, kind of a brief comment. When I looked over, let's see, I think C is the, excuse me, you can't hear?
No, no, I was just saying, C is what I'm doing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a kind of a bug on being able to hear and being able to see presentations that are made both at the Planning Commission and here before the city council. And I would only ask that those who are supervising the AV contract, which looks very substantial and is a great idea, take into account the fact that we need some way for the audience in both locations to be able to see the documents and slides that are presented on the various screens. In both cases, if you're sitting back here in the audience, in many cases, you cannot read the text that's presented on this screen, it's just too small and too far away. It could be a mixture of the graphics being designed in too small font, or it could be that we just can't get the resolution we need with this equipment. Same thing can be true with the Planning Commission, where it's complicated by the fact that there are frequent computer glitches that get in the way of the well-designed slide presentations that are often made there. And I'm thinking of one presentation that took place a few weeks ago, where a computer glitch placed basically a big colored square right in the middle of the focus of the screen for a very important presentation. I think this was the one on goats and sheep chewing away at the foliage, and so if those things could be kept in mind, it would be great to be able to upgrade our ability to see and hear at the same time that you upgrade the system. The comment on D, D was the social media policy, which I only had an opportunity to read briefly before coming to this meeting, but as I shared with the city clerk before the meeting, I was unable to discern that the policy covered use of these sites by the public. The only, the only mention I saw was use and control, issues of use by and control by city staff. So, someone might want to take a look at the policy and just make it clear that this covers public users as well, and think a little bit about what provisions are going to be made for their use, what, any restrictions that would be placed upon them, questions. I noticed there were copyright issues addressed in the policy. If I submit a picture, for example, on one of these sites, do I lose copyright control of that picture? If I submit material, does that then automatically become the property of the city of Half Moon Bay? Things of that nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Jessica, would you care to comment about any of these issues?
Certainly. So, regarding the visual component of the AV systems, we haven't looked at any upgrades to the V system, because we believe that we've fixed the technical issues by hardwiring the system, so we do print out copies of each presentation that are available on the table, but we will look at what we can do to our PowerPoints and with our projector to see how we might make them more readable to the audience. And in our social media policy, we do have a large section on page four, section 4.8, that talks about postings to city social media sites, and what, what posts would be, would be disallowed, to where the city would then be able to remove those comments. So, city staff will monitor any comments made, and if they violate the city's policy, they can and may be removed if they're not relevant to the topic at hand, and if they violate any of these sections. We could clarify that it's postings to city social media sites by the public, it just simply says that, so we can modify that, so it's more clear.
Yeah, what about the issue of the photography, for instance? The ownership rights? Did Catherine get a chance to review this?
Yeah, so this, this policy, I would say, has undergone several rounds of legal review. It's become much more common for cities to adopt social media policies. We looked at a lot of them, and this one is actually from, I believe, the city of West Hollywood, which we thought was, really covered all the bases in terms of all the various different issues. We did not try to change copyright law, or any, basically, the purpose of the policy is to respect all copyright laws, Public Records Act, record retention rules, so I would say, as to the question of copyright, that would be controlled by federal law, and this policy wouldn't alter any of those rules.
May I have a motion on these two items, please?
I move that we adopt item 1C, agreement with Conti Corporation to upgrade audiovisual systems at city facilities, and 1D, adoption of a social media policy. Okay, so let's just do 1C, agreement with Conti Corporation to upgrade audiovisual systems at city facilities.
Second. All in favor of item 1C?
Aye.
Aye. May I have another motion, please, for 1D?
I move that we adopt a social media policy. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. This is the end of the special meeting. We will now start the regular city council meeting. Yeah, it hasn't worked out. You want, you want some time off? We'll have a brief recess while we get the video switched over.
She's ready.
She's ready, okay. We need a roll call for this meeting, I assume, right?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Mayor Barbeck?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now ready to begin the housing study session, which I think is extremely important and relevant to a lot of people who are here. So, Bill, Jill, who's gonna start?
Good evening, Mayor Barbeck and city council community. We're very happy to be here tonight to bring this study session for you. As you can see, I'm seated here with this great team. I'll introduce them in a moment. As we get started, just, I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of what we intend to present and looking, I can see now that I don't have a clicker. All right, just to get everyone on the same page in the room, why are we here? Why are we having this really detailed and multi-topic housing study session? Well, city council has had a multi-year priority on affordable housing, and this year, the emphasis has been really defined in a vision by the mayor that has inspired us in his statement that he's seeking a way to accomplish a new affordable housing development, 50 apartment units in the downtown area affordable to very low and low-income households. Now, it isn't one thing that's gonna make that happen. We think it's quite a few and quite a few people, clearly, and we're going to try to cover as many of those things as we can tonight. We're also featuring and highlighting the three things that were in your priorities this year with the budget approval, looking at the first three items on this agenda. So, to get going, I want to introduce our team, which is something you asked us to do. Build a team. You guys need help. You need expertise. So, to that end, Bill Lowell is here, and among many of the different experiences he has in San Mateo County in particular, he was the director of the Housing Department for San Mateo County, and he's exactly what we needed to support us, teach us, and do research, and he will be presenting the first items tonight. And then, for a return engagement, is Sarah Clark, our deputy city attorney, and you know that she specializes in housing law, and Sarah and I have enjoyed spending quite a bit of time together working on the ADU ordinance. We're working on more zoning now, and you'll hear more about that in a bit. We've broken this up into three pieces, so that you can really focus on chunks that are related to each other, give a chance for clarifying questions if you have any, get public comments, so that it informs your discussion, and then we'll be real clear about hoping to get direction from you. We're really eager to leverage your discussion tonight to bring you back progress as soon as possible. So, with that, you can see what's laid out before you. The first two items, the Affordable Housing Fund and Community Land Trust, Bill's going to present right after he starts with a bit of a background on affordable housing and what it's all about.
Jill, before we begin, you said you'd like to interact with the public. If people want to actually comment on parts, can they quickly come up with a blue card or just pop up, or how are they gonna do that?
Yeah, we've got, there's three. So, see, Affordable Housing Fund and Community Land Trust, we would like to take a break at that point and offer time for public forum. And then again, after tenant protection measures. And then again, after the last two items, land use policy strategies and zoning strategies.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, though, for the record, if members of the public do wanna speak, we still would ask that they fill out the blue slips, so we can keep record of who spoke at the meeting. So, I would encourage anyone who wants to speak on this topic at any of the three points, when they're offered that opportunity, to fill out a blue slip and turn it in.
Is it advancing? All right. While we figure out the PowerPoint, is it okay?
It is on.
It is on, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, residents, and members of the audience. I am very glad to be here. My name is Bill Lowell. I know many of you. After quite a few years of working with the city and various projects, especially affordable housing development projects in the city, I'm delighted to now be here as part of, as a consultant for the city and would like to share some things with you tonight. So, as a way of beginning, just a few minutes of making sure everybody's on the same page, I wanted to give a little bit of background on particularly the affordable housing piece, on what does that mean? A lot of people, there's confusion around it, shall we say, and people use it in different ways, and then it, I think we consultants like to make things complicated. Actually, it's fairly simple. There are a million kind of ifs, ands, and buts, but the concept itself is fairly simple. So, with that, this first slide is basically just showing that in order to develop new housing... Yeah, okay, okay, good. While that's being worked on. One way of looking at this new housing in general and affordable housing in particular require four things for it to happen. One is funding. We're gonna talk about a little bit about each of these. One is funding for that. Second is good policies, locally adopted policies. The state also affects this, but local policies that encourage developments that the community would like to see. Third, of course, is land, one of our biggest challenges on the coast, but throughout the Bay Area, but obviously need land, and we need to get very creative around that. And fourth, we need community support. Obviously, if something is proposed and it doesn't meet the community desires or dreams or standards, it's really not gonna go anywhere. So, there has to be a level of community support.
Next.
Okay, good. And it may be coming to you too soon, but a few things. In the packet, actually, that the packet that was for this evening's, there was a two-page, it was attachment one about affordable housing handout. And if you happen to have it handy, pull it out, but if not, that is perfectly fine. The way, what affordable housing means by commonly accepted definitions is that it is 30 percent, it's approximately 30 percent, of a household's income is used for their rent or for their housing. And that's number one. And then that is, the intersection of that with the area median income is basically what affordable housing means. So, area median income are figures that come down to us from the federal government, from the Census Bureau each year, and it's, we're in an area in San Mateo County that includes the county, San Francisco and Marin County, and it produces a number, which is basically the four-person household median income. And from that, we then say, okay, that's the median income, that's the 100 percent. Then we can, we know what's 80 percent of that, what's 50 percent of it, what's 30 percent, and so on. And those, it's the combination of those two things. So, what's affordable means, if someone is low-income, which is defined as 80 percent, then it's somebody's 30 percent of that household's income at that 80 percent of area median income level, if that makes sense. And for extremely low, it's actually at a 30 percent of area median income. And what's affordable to that household, again, it's always 30 percent of household income, but it's at that 30 percent level of area median income. And that's basically it. That's your, that's the master's degree in affordable housing. You can then spend another two years trying to figure out all the ifs, ands, and buts of all the funding sources and so on, but really, it is that intersection, and that's what's so important to know. The number...
Excuse me, Bill, for the benefit of the audience, could you just give us some figures for what the area median income is for, say, a family of four?
For a family of four, and what was on the chart and that is distributed was $118,000, and that was last year's number. And the numbers came out in May, so sorry, we didn't have the chart updated in time. It's $136,800. It went up 16 percent in one year, which is unheard of. I think there's tremendous implications for that. One, in determining what's affordable, but it's not like people in the county received a 16 percent raise. It points to the fact that those folks who live in the county now tend to make more. Those who tend to make less do not live here. So, I think it really goes to that, the whole displacement discussion. But yeah, 16 percent increase of median income for a family of four this past year, for 2019, is $136,800. If we could go back, sorry. So, with that basic definition, it's important to know there are kind of, in a way, a way of thinking about this, again, without going, getting overly complicated, there are based two primary types of affordable housing. One is what's 100 percent or perhaps nearly 100 percent affordable to people at various income levels as defined by the funding, and it comes through public subsidies, tax credits, specific public funding, tax-exempt bonds, et cetera. We'll talk about, more about that in a minute. That's one type. We have, I think, in the city, five or six such 100 percent affordable projects currently. And then there's another type, which is called inclusionary. And inclusionary refers to the fact that it is part of a market rate development. So, the cost of it is really borne in that development process by the private market, and therefore, it's limited. It depends on what market conditions, so it might be a requirement that's 10 percent or 15 percent, some places even 20 percent, but it's on the private developer, and they've got to try to make this work. That's inclusionary, that a certain percentage, say, 10 percent of the apartments in this 50-unit building will be affordable to people at low income, those kinds of things. It can, I also wanted to just mention that, that, the way that is usually done is with what's called a below-market rate ordinance. And so, Half Moon Bay, for example, has a below-market rate ordinance of 20 percent of ownership units. With projects of 10 or more are limited to low income or are provided at low income. The city has also, in its specific development agreements with certain entitlement processes, required individual projects to comply as well. Okay, we can move on?
Next slide.
Okay, great. Oh, thanks. Great. So, one thing I wanted to also talk briefly about is the way that the subsidies are created. And so, with the public subsidies, you've heard of tax credits. It gets a little complicated, but that is a federal, primarily federal and state-of-California program that, through a tax credit program for profit corporations, could even be extremely wealthy individuals, but it's for-profit corporations, they use that and through that program provide typically 50 percent of the cost of an affordable housing development. And then there are other sources. So, depending on what kind of level a project is trying to reach in terms of affordability, the more expensive. This is basically, as any developer, it's sort of the same as in the private market, just more lines. It's a giant spreadsheet in the sky, or these days, I guess we'd say, spreadsheet in the cloud. And basically, there are columns of entry for every, for every year, for, you know, 15, 20, 25 years, and then the expenses and income. If apartments are being offered at 30 percent, of households earning 50 percent of the area median income, it means their rents are very low. It means that there's a subsidy, and those subsidies come from the tax credits. There are other federal, state, and local financial contributions. There's affordable housing funds from local entities, we'll talk more about that, as in Half Moon Bay. There is county money sometimes. In the case of San Mateo County, the county allocates this year and next year about $25 million per year of the Measure K sales tax money for affordable housing around the county. So, there's a number of ways. It also happens, the way the subsidy will work, is through land donations. So, when I was very involved in the redevelopment of Half Moon Village, the city donated an unused lot next to Half Moon Village for the expansion of that housing, and that is part of what made that possible. It was actually a land swap between the county, the city, and post, but that allowed the expansion of Half Moon Bay, of, excuse me, of Half Moon Village. So, there could be land donations, tax-free bonds, and other special programs. Okay. We're good. So, Half Moon Bay, as a result, oops, no, back one.
Sorry.
Half Moon Bay, I think, had approximately $2 million in its Affordable Housing Fund, and in the recent budget process added another $400,000, bringing the total to about $2.5 million. This is incredibly important. A lot of times, local jurisdictions who are, you know, cobbling together different pieces of their budget and including an Affordable Housing Fund wonder, they know that the average cost now for affordable housing construction can be $700,000 per unit, including land, and they're wondering, does this make any difference? You know, we could, we're only gonna be able to afford a few units. It is all highly leveraged. What the city, what the local jurisdiction has, in the case of Half Moon Bay, is usually money that helps in the early stages of a development and may comprise 10 percent or less of what a project will end up costing, because there's these tax credits that are gonna pay for half of it, the county's gonna pay for part of it, bonds, and even private bank loans at some point. So, it's really, really important, and I get that question a lot about, well, it's such a small amount, relatively. Will it make any difference? It's huge. It's wonderful. So, the one thing that local jurisdictions, especially in San Mateo County, have been very busy doing, as I know you're considering here in Half Moon Bay, is how to increase that amount. There are, the way that those funds grow, there's generally impact fees, which is fees on new development for, the impact is the impact they create for the need for additional affordable housing, so there's a fee associated. It could be residential or it could be commercial. To give an example, about half a dozen years ago, seven jurisdictions in the county, seven of the 21 jurisdictions, had an impact fee, either residential, commercial, or both. Today, it's 14. And 16... And 16 of the jurisdictions in the county have affordable housing funds. So it's really an amazing turnaround. If it's not impact fees, sometimes it's general funds, as I mentioned, land donations, in-lu fees, even occupancy taxes have been dedicated in one or two jurisdictions. So there's different ways to accumulate the money. So with that idea about affordable housing, the idea, a little bit about the affordable housing fund itself, and then what are the other sources that are available or would be available? It's, I wanted to talk, one of the things we wanted to talk about tonight is how is a fund utilized? And what, should the city lay out a policy that's very specific in terms of how that should work? Or should, you know, should it be less specific? Basically, in the county, it's really, it's very interesting. Of all of the, I mentioned, 16 of 21 jurisdictions have affordable housing funds. Only one has developed guidelines and, and then, which is Redwood City, we'll come back. And then East Palo Alto has a very specific affordable housing plan that has dollars attached to it. So in a sense, they've got a direction there. The others do not. Well, as it turns out, this is true throughout the Bay Area and elsewhere. They, they're very specific kinds of utilization policies come in big cities that have multiple sources of federal and state funds as entitlement jurisdictions. They used to have redevelopment agencies. So they're combining all of this, and they tend to be very big and complex. In doing research on this, we found, and in talking with a couple other people from 21 Elements and from HART, that it is best to leave, to build in flexibility for the city, that market conditions change, of course, we know, with some rapidity. Opportunities come up that we really just don't know about. And so in order to meet those, and community needs evolve. I was at the 60th birthday tonight and learning my Half Moon Bay history, which was really fun and interesting. And, you know, that's a long way back. We can tell things have changed. But in the last 10 years and in the last 20 years, things have changed greatly. So we don't necessarily want to lock ourselves into something that's overly specific. That being said, the best advice really is that the community look at guiding principles for the fund and eligible uses. And those can overlap a bit. That is, in fact, what Redwood City did, and I'll come back to, they kept theirs actually. They went through a long process, but came to a fairly simple conclusion. Let me just, but what I have on the slide here, this is going to be, it's going to be hard if you, I can't see it, but I listed some examples of guiding principles. These are the kinds of things that could spark your interest or that you know would best meet a community need. It wouldn't necessarily be all of them. Our communities are obviously so different one from another, and there very well, of course, could be things that are not up here. But this is just an example to give an idea of what kind of guiding principles. One is increasing overall availability, meaning of affordable housing. So we know the situation that we're in, in Northern California and Half Moon Bay and the coast. And how do we get more affordable housing? That that's a guiding principle. Oh, thank you. And also, second one would be deeper levels of affordability. So sometimes at 80%, that low income, that's extremely important. But sometimes there's a desire to meet also, what about the very low, which is the 50% or even lower? There are issues around critical workforce, workforce development and retention, recruitment and retention issues. Is that a priority for looking at? How do we affect positively our local workforce? Supportive housing refers to senior housing and housing for disabled folks, often a high priority for communities. Homelessness prevention, that could be, it's a program that's currently run through the core service agencies, that's funded by the county and a number of private funders. It's basically a recognition of the fact that if someone who is housed, if a family that's housed becomes unhoused, it is a total disaster, of course, for them in every social aspect. And then because of our housing situation, tight housing situation, for them to be able to find additional, a new house, new apartment, whatever it is, is so, so difficult. And so the theory behind that is, if it's possible, don't let people become homeless in the first place. If it's a, so the way that that program sometimes works is, it's not an ongoing subsidy, but it's a one-time. It's, it might help with rent once, it could help with PG&E once, it's things like that. Another guiding principle that's important is leveraging additional funding. As I mentioned, anything that the city does with its money would be contributed to many more times over by other funding sources, and that's super important. It's very important to consider, one thing I didn't mention before that I should have an important distinction, all of the, all of the subsidies for affordable housing are for 80% AMI or less. So it leaves out the, what's called moderate income, the 80% to 120%. So that's an important target, potentially. But that money, the city would need to do it basically 100%. There's, there are no other sources of subsidy for above 80%. So it's something to keep in mind, it's like sometimes called that missing middle. The reason it's missing is there are no subsidies above 80% federal, state, or local. But it's an important group of folks to also be looking at. I will say one more thing on that, sorry, just while we're on that idea. The way that a number of jurisdictions look at this strategically is they say, let's try to meet the moderate income through the inclusionary ordinance, at least in part. And then let's look at the subsidies for the below-low income. But there's lots of strategies around that. And finally, an example, some communities have said, you know, we need to meet state requirements, the regional housing allocation, which didn't used to be that important, but the state, of course, it's important in and of itself to create additional housing, but it didn't used to have consequences, I should say. And it's increasingly, from the state's point of view, going to have a consequences attached to not meeting regional housing needs assessments. So that might be. Those are examples. There definitely could be others and things that you may be thinking of. One next slide. On utilization, some of this can overlap, but we look at things like land purchase, construction of new affordable housing, leveraging, ability to leverage other funds again, creating deeper affordability, preserving existing affordable housing. Sometimes when there are deed-restricted units, they may have an expiration date associated with them. And if things are becoming, or potentially becoming, going back to a market rate, sometimes people, communities want to preserve that deed restriction, and it costs money. So those, those things are all important. The land purchase could be temporary even, other funding sources will pay for that. So there could be a takeout, if you will, at some point. But somebody has to step in first. That's why I mentioned, it's really important that there's so much freedom really around the local source of funds, that it's often the first in. And able to be more reactive in the best sense, very, you know, creative, and then hopefully be paid back quickly in some cases, so that kind of thing. I mentioned that I was going to, I was going to tell you what Redwood City had adopted. They had adopted four things. As I said, they had actually a very extensive process, including the community. And, sorry, let me put this in my notes. No, I've got it here, just one second. Okay. Yeah, four things that the fund should be used for, obviously a much more urban city, a much larger city, so, but it's just an example of what was their thinking. They highlight new multifamily affordable construction or site acquisition. Second, acquisition with or without rehabilitation of existing multifamily housing to become deed-restricted, sort of a preservation effort. Rehabilitation of existing deed-restricted multifamily, again, preservation. Refinance of existing deed-restricted to preserve affordability. So their local circumstances are that Redwood City has a number of large multifamily developments that were built in the 60s and 70s with deed restrictions that are expiring. So they're, they're looking heavily at that. And then new construction, but just to give a sense of how that works. And I'm just going to stop there with the affordable housing part.
You're going to do this and you're going to do the housing part.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, there it is.
Yeah.
One more slide.
Oh, no, this is your side. That's it.
Utilization.
Go back.
Go back.
That one.
That one.
How.
The process, thank you. Our audience is not the only one that can't read this all the time. So another question is, how would the money actually get distributed? And in the broad buckets of that, if you will, there are three ways. One is a notice of fund availability, a very formal competitive process that's used when the program itself is very well-defined and the funder knows that there's going to be a lot of competition for it. So the county with its $25 million issues a NOFA once a year, and companies, developers compete for that. It's terrific for that purpose, it's extremely complex. Having worked on the county NOFA, it ends up being about 100 pages and can take, including the evaluation, literally hundreds of hours of staff time. So it's for that very special purpose. I think that, and I've talked with the county Department of Housing, there could be a way, if, if some of the funds were devoted for projects in that direction, that the city and other cities that are interested also could dovetail with the county effort. They could do all of the front door work, all of the analysis, and then it would still come back to a Half Moon Bay decision, but use the county process. That would be a great way to leverage that. The second way for process could be a request for proposals, an RFP. We use that, of course, we use that all the time for services. You could even use that around development, sometimes call it a request for qualifications, RFQ, when it's land development. But basically, a less formal process that allows the city to, once a provider is identified, allows the provider and the city to develop something together. So it's not a bid situation, the way the NOFA is closer to a bid, it's not, not actually. And then there's over-the-counter process. So basically, because, it is, it is challenging, because the opportunities can arise at any moment, they're not always foreseen, and somebody may get very creative, and there could be a great opportunity. And so we want city staff to be able to react to something over the counter, which could always then, you know, obviously come back to council for approval. But there could be guidelines set up around that. There needs to, however it's set up, there probably needs to be some kind of option that allows the city to react to emerging opportunities that couldn't have been foreseen in the prior year. So those are kind of the general distribution methods.
So you're going to talk about community land trusts for a few minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And then we're going to take a break.
Okay. So before the break, we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk about community land trusts. I know the city has been having some discussions and is very interested in that concept. A definition, if you will, would be that the community land trust, CLTs, are nonprofit organizations that hold land in perpetuity for the benefit of the users of the land. In the case of affordable housing, the CLT owns the land and perhaps other buildings on it, but certainly the land, so that the residents can buy or rent their dwellings at below-market rates. It's most commonly seen in ownership situations, although you can be very creative with this. Almost any scenario could be drawn, the critical part of it is land that's held in beneficial ownership for the uses of that land for housing purposes in perpetuity. But you could, beyond that, you can become quite creative. What the usefulness of it is, it is, it does have the ability, the CLT has the ability to acquire land and other assets. It can preserve affordability in perpetuity, which is important, because staff comes and goes, city departments come and go, there's, there's a lot of, not over the course of 10 years, but over the course of 20 and 30 years, there are a lot of issues. There are some sad stories of assets actually being lost from inventory because, you know, people didn't quite know what had been happening 30 years before. Of course, we've gotten a lot better in that, in terms of recording things and having recorded deed restrictions, but still having an organization whose purpose it is, it helps to preserve affordability in perpetuity. And that's the whole mission. And then CLTs also administer a lot of affordable housing. They, one of the things that is interesting about CLTs, it's an idea that's been around for many, many years, at least since the 70s. Everyone agrees it's a good idea. It has succeeded in some areas, but it's been a challenge also. And sometimes, I'm not an expert on this, I think some of the challenge has come around the ability to create a kind of critical mass. So it's a nonprofit organization, it's going to need some kind of a director, it's going to need somebody to prepare their tax returns every year, it's going to need, just like any nonprofit, and if it's administering assets, it's going to need somebody to actually do that. So there's a critical mass of income that's needed over time to be able to do that. The, that, the tension is that CLTs, the beauty of them is that they arise so much out of the passion of the local community and members of the community. And so the, the idea is, and the vision is very local. And then the need is, or not the need, but the ability to support that has to be a little bit larger. So I think there are ways of dealing with that. There's, there are at least seven CLTs in the Bay Area, and there is an association of those CLTs. And they help each other quite a bit, so that I, you know, I think something, if there's a group in the community that's interested in exploring that, it would be interesting to explore how to cooperate with others, so that maybe there's one back office and not seven back offices. So that if the opportunities come up rarely, for example, if a CLT ends up owning, you know, five plots of land with 10 townhouses on it in its first 10 years, there's no way that the CLT can have enough income to keep the organization going. So it needs some kind of volume. But that being said, a beautiful idea, they are nonprofits, so it wouldn't be the city itself that would have a CLT. Cities can help with financing, either maybe a little bit of startup, but have to look at the costs, obviously. And it could be on, some ongoing financing. And cities also can provide, through their policies, can play a bit of a matchmaker role. So a number of communities in Sonoma County have been very successful with the CLT of Sonoma County. And the way it's done there, it's basically ownership. They still have subdivisions coming in Sonoma County. So in a subdivision of 20 or 30, 40 homes, that community of Petaluma or Cloverdale says 10% of them need to be affordable, and they work with the CLT and the developer to create that at the time of the new development. But there are other, there's CLT here in San Mateo County and around the Bay. I think that, I was just going to say, in terms of acquiring, it can include other assets as well. So I know when I was at the Department of Housing, Pahali, which is a county organization with most, most of its work located in East Palo Alto, the county had funded Pahali to, one, to first buy a few to first buy a few houses, and was repaid in the sale of those within a few years. And then the county had a rehabilitation program, so also gave grants to rehab those houses. So Pahali, at one, I don't know the current status, but at one point had several houses and more units, because some of them had two or three units per house, and those are permanently affordable at this point. So it's just an example. In that case, the CLT owned both the land and the house. They were renting those houses at affordable rates. Okay. Yes, that may be it, or a good place to stop, anyway.
Good place to stop. Okay, great. Great. So that is our first segment, and we can entertain, clarifying questions, if council has them, or it looks like you've got quite a few cards already. So public comment on these first two topics of the Affordable Housing Fund and the Community Land Trust concept. If there are comments on tenant protection measures or any of the other topics, we'd suggest that we wait until the next segments, so that they are informed by the presentation and come together. Thanks.
This would be an appropriate time to entertain public input. Our first card is Pete Smith, followed by Paul Gregorius.
Good evening. My name is Pete Smith. I'm a little over 20 years here in Half Moon Bay, and I'm a ranch owner within the city limits of the city. I've been active for some time in the wonderful set of community meetings that have been conducted, from the general plan advisory committees to the public forums headed up by Supervisor Horstley and others, to the Planning Commission and so on, with the interest of doing something in my now partial retirement that will be good for everybody. So in front of you tonight, there's a sketch of a concept that's the most recent concept of a mix of affordable housing of nine units on the ranch property, and an agricultural showcase in support of farmers' market and restaurant supply operations that would also utilize, one of the things I've been trying to save is an 1865 Serica house on the corner that some have wanted to tear down, and I kind of hate to lose it as a historic building. I think I'm able to address some of the things that Bill's presentation offered as problems, that is, the supply of land, because I've got the land. And I think in the proposal that I've put together, a community can be developed, and I see that community as being a mix of low-income, up through median-income, affordable housing categories, as being a community that's self-supportive and also is community-supportive, not only in the agricultural support area, but also the support of the others in our community that we have to care about. That includes seniors, that includes service providers in our restaurants and hotels, police, public service, you know, for instance, I know one guy on the water board who was commuting to Half Moon Bay every day from Santa Cruz, and then decided it would be better to commute every day from Pacifica. Well, neither one of those serves our interests in the city to minimize traffic and circulation problems. It would be much better to have such a person here. So basically, I wanted to speak towards, in support of the wonderful 15-page summary you have from planning staff. I loved what it had. One of the big problems we've had is zoning allowance, and that's taken care of in the overlay that's been proposed. So all we're left with is funding. So I encourage you to be flexible on the allowance of funding that you have available for infrastructure, because of the high costs of water, sewer, roads that are acceptable to fire, and so on. So thank you very much. I take it that was my time, so I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, your sketch here shows that these are mobile homes. Is that what you had in mind? I'm just curious.
That is. They're mobile homes, similar to many of the current residents of Half Moon Bay that we have. And it's done that way for a couple of reasons. One is, they're fast, and they're regulatory easy, because they meet all the codes, and you just bring them in. One of the aspects of the plan that I've put together is I'm going to encourage home ownership of those units. So for those that can't afford a slight increase in the monthly rent, I'm proposing that I do a, I purchase the mobile homes, okay? And I would lease them back on a lease/purchase arrangement, so that the community members that are in the community will have some skin in the game. They'll be able to own their homes, just like most of the rest of us own our homes, by paying off at a monthly rate that allows them to take some ownership and to increase the buy-in that they have as renters. I think that's very important. As an American, I think it's important, and I think it can be supported. The levels of ongoing revenue from such a venture are completely acceptable. So maybe I become a bank, but the thing that's holding it up now is infrastructure, planning, site prep, those kinds of things. They all cost money, and, you know, it would be my life savings to do that. That's where the city may be able to help, or the county may be able to help. So I encourage you, when you look at the options here, to think flexible, to think, perhaps encouraging private landowners to become part of this cause, which is a very important community cause, can be a big plus for, not only for the people that need affordable housing, but also as an example for the local communities around us and the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. It was interesting. Paul, you wanted to talk about tenant protections, basically. Do you want to?
The next section, I think.
Okay, we'll do that. Judy Taylor also wanted to talk about tenant protections, as well as funding and land use. So she wants to be on all bases. So why don't you want to talk about funding to start with?
This is not my day job, and this is my fourth meeting today, so I'm going to beg your indulgence. I'm about to hit the wall. A couple of things, background, and then some specifics, and some of this you've heard before. CAR, the California Association of Realtors, is working very hard, supporting Scott Weiner's bill. I'm not sure how you guys like that one. I haven't followed that part of the conversation. But a couple of the other things that we're working on, one would be to change the definition for school bonding, the definition of facilities, to include housing. And what this would mean, would mean that when Cabrino Unified passes a school bond for facilities, they would be able to use some of that to provide housing for teachers and employees. And they would presumably be able to use some of their land to do the same. So this is one of the things that we're working at institutionally. Another thing would be to, and this will be on the ballot, I believe, in 2020, is to do another amendment to Proposition 13, so that bonds for affordable housing would only have to do a 55% threshold instead of a 2/3. Now, I cannot imagine this community ever passing a bond to build more housing, but presumably that is something that would help. One of the things that I've run into recently that I was not aware of is that there is a difference in financing between R1 and R2 and R3. R1 and R2, you can get owner-occupied financing. R3, you cannot. That means that the amount of cash that the property owner has to put in to build it, even if they are going to owner-occupy it, is significantly higher. And this is something that I had not been aware of, because we have very few R3 properties around. So there may be something that you can do to tweak the zoning, so that you can get that higher density, but still fall into that owner-occupied financing, because that will make a big difference to individuals. Given the meeting we were in last Friday, none of this stuff is going to work if you don't have the Coastal Commission behind you. I mean, this is just all an exercise in whatever, unless the Coastal Commission is behind you. Since the inception of the Coastal Act, they have told us, up and down, you know, Santa Cruz line to double slide, your primary land uses will be visitor-serving and agriculture, which means a lot of low-paid jobs, but you will not provide the housing for those people. And this has been a chronic, chronic systemic problem. And until we get the Coastal Commission to say, yes, you need the housing for these workers, and none of these traffic and all of these other things are not going to get fixed, until then, we're going to be screwed. Couple of things more quickly. Tenant protections, you can have tenant protections, or you can have private investment in multifamily housing. You can't have both. When you do the inclusionary housing, all of those, they increase the price for the property next door, it increases the cost of housing across the board, and that cannot be stressed enough. That cannot be stressed enough. We budget $50,000 to $75,000 just in fees before we can put a backhoe on a lot. That raises the price of the housing stock across the board. And if you're talking about housing that is not subsidized, you need to bring those costs down. And one of the other things that I just want to say, how many, Jill, you may know this offhand, in the past five years, how many multifamily buildings have been built in Half Moon Bay? Duplexes, triplexes? Three, four, five, maybe?
Through the mayor, would you like me to answer as we go?
Please, go, answer.
Okay. Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think of the most recent annual report that we submitted to HCD. Mostly, we've had small mixed-use development, where we've had two, three, four units with some office space, for example. We just approved a duplex, and we have a triplex that's going forward to the Planning Commission in a month or two. So it's a simmer.
A simmer, yeah, and it's a slow simmer. And that's been pretty consistent. I have a building inspector, longtime contractor, has been looking for a lot that he can do multifamily on, and at least break even when he's done, and he would wear a belt to build it, and he can't do it. So that is one of the problems that you're dealing with, and I don't know how you work around that. The last point that I want to make, though, is a really big one, and that is to encourage our kids to go into the trades. One of the reasons why our housing costs are so high right now is we don't have people in the trades. And we have people here on the coast side in the trades that are making $60 to $85 an hour. They can set their own time. They've been able to provide some pretty nice lives for themselves. And so to work with the chamber, with the school district, with the unemployed in the community, getting these people into the trades, it'll take traffic off of 92, and it will bring our housing costs down. And thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you. Pam Dorr.
I'm Pam Dorr. Wanted to just mention, when my family moved here, I was at Cunha in 1976, we moved here because it was affordable. And I think so many of us were lucky if we bought in early, and those of us that kind of came back to the area recognized the high cost. I just wanted to mention the importance of workforce housing. And any BMR or below-market-rate units that are constructed, it's so important to tie those to the AMI, area median income, and not have those appreciate over time, because it always requires an additional infusion of capital from the city or the county when we do that. And currently, all the BMRs we have will appreciate at a different rate than the AMI. So when those do come up for sale, if we could capture those into permanently affordable housing, it makes a big difference in the workforce. I also just wanted to mention that limited-equity housing co-op models are a little unusual in this day and age, but are pretty innovative and almost a perfect fit for Half Moon Bay, where we're very familiar with farm co-ops and working co-ops. It's just a natural way to bring affordable housing to the coast and be able to include a lot more families in the housing market that are there now. So limited-equity housing co-ops could be a model that we exercise. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, Pam. Sakura Aguilar, followed by Nicole Cordova.
Good evening. My name is Sakura Aguilar, and I go to Half Moon Bay High School. Affordable housing is very important to me and has affected me in many ways. This is important to me because students' grades can start to decline because of them starting to worry about helping out with their family's bills or helping out with rent. People who also have to worry about this can start to see a decline in their mental health because of all the stress. This has affected me in many ways. One way that this has affected me is because my dad has to work two jobs, and my mom, like, works overtime most nights, so I barely get to see them. I have also seen many families who share a house with other people, but their immediate family lives in a one-bedroom, in one bedroom. So, yeah, I hope that the city continues this important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Cordova, followed by Nancy, I can't quite read this, Scavedra, something like that. Correct me if I mispronounce your name.
Hello? Okay. Good evening. My name is Nicole Cordova. I am 16 years old, a high school student, and a member of YLI, Youth Leadership Institute. I'm here to address the lack of affordable housing in Half Moon Bay. I hope that we can take action among improving the affordability of housing. If the following of what I have to say helps with the consideration of taking steps towards action for this, I hope so. The lack of affordable housing has affected our community, members of all ages, from children to teens to adults. Ways that the lack of affordable housing has affected my community members, including I, are losing homes. And an example of that would be, my family has lost, we have lost our house about a year and a half ago. We've had to live in a storage room for shelter, although we are no longer living in a storage room, we are currently in a home. Although, we are not the only ones who have struggled with a similar situation like this. There are other families that I have witnessed who are also living in storage rooms. And also, they are afraid to speak up, because they are scared that they will be, that child protection services will come in and take their children away from them, because they can't, they can't, they can't provide their children a secure home. Another way lack of affordable housing has affected my community is lack of privacy. By this, I mean, families are sharing homes with others, multiple families are sharing homes due to... Multiple families are sharing homes due to the inability to afford homes on their own. And this also ties in to safety. A lot of the next affordable, some of the next affordable home options may be in areas that have higher crime rates. Also, with children living in areas that may have, that with higher crime rates, it's harder for children to feel more secure as they're walking down the street, worried that if neighbors or anybody nearby could come in and do something, especially with, if areas may be surrounded with drugs and alcohol. Also, another way that lack of affordable housing has affected members in my community, including I, relationships among families, parents and children. Parents worry, they worry about their financial situations and handle their stress or financial stress on children. This may affect youth's mental health as they worry about their family's income and security of their homes. And sometimes, when it comes to a child in a family that may be low-income, they may be so stressed about how they, that they need to take action as well and support their own family on their own as well. Yes, and this is what I've had to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Nancy, followed by Margarita Vazquez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy Svejdra. I'm a student at Half Moon Bay High School. And I'm just going to talk about how affordable housing has affected me. As a young one, I never really understood how affordable housing affected my parents until I grew. And I was very naive to never really fully understand that affordable housing is a huge issue, a huge issue in my family. Not only do we, do we live in a small apartment of two bedrooms, a bathroom, a small living room, and a small kitchen. It's, and we don't live in a unit where it's affordable, not because we can afford to pay $2,000 a month per rent, but there just isn't any enough room in the affordable unit houses for us to live there. It's crazy for me to think that you have to make up to $100,042 to live comfortably here in Half Moon Bay. There's no way my parents make that much money. And I just wanted to address the issue. I hope you guys, I know this is a huge issue that won't be solved overnight, and I know it takes time. And I am thankful that you guys are giving this opportunity to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Margarita Vazquez, followed by Ruby Salazar.
Good evening. My name is Margarita Vazquez, and I'm a Half Moon Bay resident. I've lived here mostly my whole life. So I've seen my parents struggle, as well, as a youth I mentioned. I think one of the biggest things for me currently is I'm about, I'm going to graduate college in a year. So that's definitely like a scary thing for me as a young professional, thinking about, wanting to have a sense of privacy and wanting to move out, but not having the opportunity to do so in the community that I love. And I think that is really scary to me, especially because I would love to stay in this community, and it's all I know. So I definitely think that by pushing forward this project, it's a great way to help support the young professionals to stay local and to live, to keep growing up in this community. And I mean, I hope to never move out, even though my parents have considered it. We've had, we've thought about moving out to like Oregon since we've heard it's cheaper. But like I said, we love Half Moon Bay, and it's all that I know. So I definitely don't want to move out. And I'm so glad that there has been more work to push this project forward. And I'm really glad to see that you had all created a task force to see this project move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Salazar, followed by Candelario Lopez Martinez.
Hello. My name is Ruby Salazar, and I am a community member of Half Moon Bay. While doing research and reading through the report on housing put on by City Manager Bob Nisbet, I found that the threshold defining affordable housing as housing that costs no more than 30% of household income is a threshold that is not taking into account its low and very low-income community. For Half Moon Bay's median income, it is around $100,000K a year, and I can tell you that my friends, family, and neighbors make nowhere near that amount. To put this into perspective, according to a rent café study, if we went by this 30% threshold for Oakland with a medium of $52K, that person would be able to afford a 340 square foot space to live. Now, imagine a family of four living in that space. Growing up, my dad made an average of $40K a year and was the sole provider for my family of five. 25% of households in Half Moon Bay made $50K or less of those that make $50K, and of those that make $50K or less, 65% of them spend more than half of their income on rent, according to census data. I'd also like to ask the council to research if this 30% threshold is accurate demonstrating, is accurate, is an accurate demonstration of affordable housing according to its lowest-income community and the cost of living in Half Moon Bay. I'd also like to demonstrate my support for allowing church properties to allow for them to provide housing for their staff and families they serve. Churches are a safe haven for many, and their ability to provide housing for staff and families they serve can provide safety for those families. Thank you.
Thank you. Candelario, followed by Karina Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Candelario Lopez. I'm a Half Moon Bay High School student and a member of YLI. This is my first city council meeting, and affordable housing has been an issue in Half Moon Bay, and has been an issue for me, mostly because my parents have struggled. And we've actually lost our house about eight years ago, and now live in a mobile home where we still struggle to pay rent. And our income is very low, which is also, it doesn't really help. Some issues that have occurred is many families have moved either out of state or to other locations where rent is cheaper. And this really doesn't help, there's many families living in storage rooms, which is very unhumane, and you have a lot of families together, and it's just not, it's very unsanitary. There's a lot of more working hours that parents put into it, which, as youths, we see our parents less, and all they talk about is rent, having the money to pay this, and it's just struggles, and it affects our mental health a lot because all we talk about is having to pay off rent and how are we going to do this? And it just doesn't really help us. The statistics that claim that students that have been moving have struggled with grades in school due to the lack of a stable home. And like you mentioned, that the, that the average household of four income has raised by 16%, it doesn't really demonstrate or show what everyone else has struggled with. Like, we make less than $50K, and we struggle. There's families that just make less than that and often end up living homeless. Yeah, just wanted to say that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karina Martinez, followed by Alyssa Ramirez.
Good evening. My name is Karina Martinez. I'm a Half Moon Bay High School student and also a member of YLI. The lack of affordable housing can affect myself and other people in some of the following ways that I'm going to list. It's something always on your mind that you have to worry about, especially for my parents. And many can't live in a comfortable and good manner compared to others. And moving out of town is always a big consideration, especially for my family. And it's too pricey to find a nice house here for a family, especially for a big family to live comfortably. And people in many cases end up living very cramped, as some of other people have said. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Ramirez, followed by Greg Jamison.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alyssa Ramirez. I'm a student at Half Moon Bay High School and a member of YLI. So I'm just here just to share a quick little message because I know some of the people have already mentioned it. Growing up, you know, topic of rent and just being able to pay has always been something that I've heard my parents talk about, and it's just been a constant reminder all my life. And I'd just like to share, reshare a piece of data that my, you know, one of the youth already shared, that a family of four needs to make $142,000 a year annually to live comfortably here in Samhain County. And I'd like to share that my family only makes $70,000 a year. And so, yeah, affordable housing, it's definitely something that's needed here, and, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker in this section is Greg Jamison.
Good evening. I guess we heard a lot of good stories tonight, and obviously, there's a huge demand for housing. And to increase the supply is obviously difficult, construction costs are high. And so I had a couple of ideas I just wanted to discuss tonight, and I don't have the answers to these, but when you're doing a commercial residential mix, maybe downtown, adding a unit above an existing business, obviously, water is an expense in a project. And you have priority water and non-priority. I don't know if, when you do a mixed use, if you're allowed to use that under priority water. If you can, that helps reduce construction costs and obviously would motivate people that are in that zone to build another unit above their existing unit. Otherwise, if you just build in a residential zone, you have to have, you know, non-priority water, and those are very expensive at this time. Another issue I wanted to talk about was, I don't know how apartments are being looked at and if that helps meet the city standards for the state. If we had more apartments, again, that's a supply, that will help reduce or potentially help reduce rents anytime you have more supply could do that. And if it does, it, you know, might make it a little bit easier on everyone as well. So I'm hoping we can do something more with apartments as well. Thank you.
What's next? Council?
Yeah, we thought you might want to discuss the item while it's fresh before we move on to the next segment. And the slide above, we're encouraging you to give us direction regarding establishing a program for the utilization and determining additional future funding sources for the Affordable Housing Fund. And we can, we can click back if you'd like, remembering the NOFA, the RFP, the over-the-counter process, the concept of having guiding principles and eligible uses for the funding, any, any of those other portions of the staff report or Bill's presentation.
I have a quick clarifying question, and that is, is there funding available for CLTs?
Not that I'm aware of. It would be worth looking into, but I don't know if there's any source that...
I actually, since we have such wonderful, informed housing staff, I'd actually would entertain recommendations from you about what you think might be the best mix of strategies based on your experience, and both in Half Moon Bay and, you know, in the county. I mean, I have some sort of general leanings, but it would be nice to have some recommendations to work off.
We could, we'll definitely come back with that. So, yeah, if there's anything in particular that you want to call out at the moment, great, and certainly, you know, taking into consideration all the characteristics of Half Moon Bay, we'll come back with recommendations.
So you're looking for some direction?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's...
I certainly like the idea of a notice of funding availability and perhaps, you know, partnering with the county on that, piggybacking on some of their resources. I think, given the amount we have, I think leveraging other funds is very important for us. I agree with one of the speakers that talked about the high cost of water and sewer and, you know, helping with those, with those upfront costs. So I certainly, you know, would, would entertain use of the monies in that direction. It'd be great if we could get some stuff, you know, built, but we might, like you said, do pieces of that, given land, funding, and all that stuff. If there's a way to use that funding to create deeper affordability, like if it pencils out at one level, but we could use our money to, you know, deepen the affordability and make more pencil out, I think that's a really good idea. I suppose we're not talking yet about, like, land use issues. I guess that's to come, about oval home parks or whatever it is.
It is, and you know, at that point, you may have some more thoughts about this topic, and that's fine. We're happy to entertain those then. One other pitch that staff always likes to know is if there's anything in particular that you did not like, that you don't think is a good fit here, that you think there'd be a better way to go, we would love to know that, too, so we can steer clear of that and focus where it really matters.
Well, I think, I think that the Community Land Trust issue needs a lot more work. I think that's a separate thing to do besides, I mean, to me, the low-hanging fruit is leveraging what money we have now, you know, in the most effective way possible. I think the Community Land Trust item looks attractive for some reasons, but I think we might want to collaborate with others for the reasons that you discussed. And by the way, I think your explanation of all this has been very well done, and it's clarified some things in my own thinking about what affordable housing really means. So I'd like, you know, more research separately on the Community Land Trust. Maybe there are folks who would like to come forward who are interested in developing that, but I see that as more of a longer-term thing and a lot more information and outreach to the folks who are actually doing it to understand it better. But certainly, letting people know that we have money to spend and entertaining some bids, as you called them, I think would be a good start.
I'd like to understand a little bit better what you're talking about when you say leveraging our funds. We've got $2.5 million. How do we turn that into $5 million?
Right. So a lot of it, it depends on the type of project is really the leveraging. So it's said that inclusionary is paid for by private industry in the development, but whether public subsidies, leveraging is, means using our local funds in a way that will attract the most additional other public subsidies. So, for example, one of the things that I would reiterate a little bit is that the moderate income level is there are no other sources of funding. So if the city wanted to do something, there's, there's different ways of doing this, but if the city just wanted to buy in and do something very directly there, the city ends up paying 100% of that. Whereas, in lower income level and below, 80% and below... Whereas in lower income level and below, 80% and below, there are many other sources. It's never easy, and, and it's, it's, of course, there's a million, there's a lot of competition. But, you know, it happens all the time that these things are accomplished, and it's at 80% and below is what I meant by being able to leverage other sources. So for, let me give you a concrete example. In the county's NOFA, the 25 million per year, that is available to low-income, 80% and less. It's not, so if we went to them with a project that was 100% of median, it's, it's not eligible.
I wanted to add a couple more things, because Bill's been working with us so much that I think might resonate with you as well, in terms of the perspective of the city being, as you called it, open for business. And having established the affordable housing guiding principles for the fund and the eligible uses, and either coming out with a NOFA, RFP, or even rules about what over-the-counter might mean. For example, when staff meets with a developer, they want to know how much, we know you have funds, is it available to me? Right now, we're not able to give any reassuring guidance there. If we could say, oh, for very low units, the council is comfortable with a range of $100,000 or something per unit generally. We can't guarantee it, we will go to them and have them approve it, but these are the guidelines. And with that, back to the county NOFA, one of the criteria for qualifying for that was, does the local jurisdiction, did they pitch, pitch anything in? And if they did, that's a better application. It scores more points, and again, we're open for business. We're collaborating. And so I think that that's more of the layers of how the leveraging works from a really practical perspective.
They have a preference, does the county have a preference for large or small developments? Because here in town, we're, we're not talking about anything very large. We're talking about 10, 20, 30, maybe 40, if we're lucky.
Right. It, it, yeah, it doesn't specify the size of a project, but it emphasizes, for example, tax credit availability. And tax credits typically come in, it can be used at any level, but the way that it works financially is a little bit larger project of 40 units or more. Each year, the county changes its NOFA based on input from the community. And, you know, I've talked to the Department of Housing staff about, how about putting something aside on the infill side? How about, you know, we're hearing from churches, we're hearing from communities that have small lots downtown that need money. And so that could certainly be a consideration for the future. The one that actually just closed, so maybe it's irrelevant, but that was a little bit larger. And in the past, there, it's, it's been, there have been a great variety of things, including farmworker housing, you know, so there's been a great variety. And so I think we need to advocate for helping with the smaller infill, along with the larger.
Just a couple of quick, well, first, a couple of quick questions. So tell me, right now, based on the numbers you threw out, what is that cutoff point between low income and moderate income?
In terms of the dollar amount?
Yeah. Just want to be sure on that.
Just need to look, sorry. So for a family of four, and this is last year, so it's gone up a bit, a family of four, for moderate income was $142,000, low income was $117,000, and then down.
Right. But in terms of the 80%, 30%, low income, what...
So how would it translate to a rent?
Or, so we were talking about, let's say, people, folks who have, well, let's say it's two people, and their joint income is $60,000.
Mm-hmm.
What, and then in terms of rent, how would that translate?
Right. So if there were, if you developed, that would be two people who, at $60,000, would be very low income, approximately 50% of AMI. And if there are units that are built then, that are targeted at that income level, they would qualify, first of all, because they're in that, the 50% of AMI or thereabouts. And then the rent would be always the 30% of their household income.
So two people, at what point, let's say $60,000 would be very low income, at what point for two people would it be moderate or above?
Two-person moderate was $114,000, that's 120% of the median.
Right. So based on a couple of teachers who have only been teaching for a couple of years, based on the numbers I've seen on their salaries, they would actually still be within very low income.
Well, would you say teachers, beginning teachers would be $60,000?
Maybe, sometimes 50.
So if there are two, 120, it would be moderate income.
Right, okay. And one teacher would be...
One would, one would be, if there was just one teacher in that household, in a two-person household, it would be low income, yes.
Right, okay. So, good, that helps. I'm trying to get a sense, really, of, you know, because I was, I was hearing, you know, students talking about their situation for YLI, Youth Leadership Institute. And certainly, every situation they're describing was low income, as would a single teacher, actually, be low income. The reason I'm bringing this up is because, you know, sometimes we throw these numbers out, we have certain kind of, you know, a template for an individual, what that looks like. And it's actually much more inclusive than we realize, covers a lot of folks. So, and when we're talking workforce housing, you know, different priorities that we have, that would include a lot of those folks.
Yes.
What I would like to see is, so let's take an example, workforce housing. Pacifica apparently has built teacher housing.
The, the school district is researching it.
Yeah. Well, I think they've actually, they, haven't they built a...
The only, the, teacher and faculty and staff housing has been built by the Community College District, now at all three campuses. Pacifica has run into problems, especially on the cost escalation side. The district that's closest is Jefferson Union High School District, which issued bonds and is constructing teacher housing on, at Jefferson High School.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'd be interested in, you know, staff pursuing what that may or may not look like. We have a new superintendent here who has done work in that area, and so we might have an interesting window.
Absolutely. And I think that would be great, would be to invite them, the Home For All effort, that's the county collaborative, has a set of task forces, and they're, a couple are continuing, and they're reconstituting others, and starting this summer, they're doing one on, particularly on school, teacher and staff housing.
Another area that I'm always fascinated by is the, we've had some very successful Mid-Penn housing communities built here. One of the limits of the Mid-Penn housing has been only, I think, 40% of that housing can be allotted specifically for Half Moon Bay residents, has to be open, the other 60% open to other county residents. And of course, that goes the other way around in other parts of the county, therefore, Half Moon Bay folks. But when some of that was built, apparently, a lot of people didn't realize that limit. And perhaps, since that's such a great source of funding, administration of housing, vetting tenants and all that, I'd be curious if we can renegotiate some of those percentages, you know, is that written in stone, or, you know, if we contribute some money, or we get some other finances in, you know, could we...
Let our attorney comment on that. It's not a financial matter, it's a fair housing matter.
Where the funding comes from, right?
So federal and state fair housing law, yeah, to, to not produce any kind of discriminatory effect for protected categories of our population. So, and that's where some, what you'll see often, and I'm going to turn this over, is a preference for local workers or, and/or residents.
Right.
Requirements, this is, keeping, the requirements keep attorneys employed. That's where, you know, looking, basically, if this, if the area is so small that has a requirement, let's say there's, there's no people of, of one of the protected classes of folks living in that area, and you say only people from that area can apply, you're in effect saying that people from that protected class cannot apply for housing. So that's where it becomes very, very difficult, and gets into a lawsuit that would make sense. But you can have preferences, local preferences for living and/or working.
I would just confirm what Bill has said, that's, that's my understanding as well. I think on the preferences, one other thing to consider is, courts have been skeptical of durational requirements, meaning you have to have lived in Half Moon Bay for two years before you can apply, something along those lines. Instead, they look at, are more comfortable with requirements that are, are you intending for this to be your permanent residence? And so, kind of a bona fide residential requirement is more acceptable. But we talked a little bit about this in the staff report, that we are comfortable moving forward with some sort of preference system, where we are giving preferences to Half Moon Bay residents and workers. So if that's the direction the council wants to go in, we can certainly explore that further.
And hopefully, in the, in the context of today's housing crisis, perhaps some of those models that preexisted might be opening to some variance in negotiation.
There, we could, we could definitely look into that. I would say one other thing is also on the funding source. So there's, I was, since I was responsible for the Department of Housing when the Mid-Penn and Mercy projects were constructed a few years ago, they were, there was the land donation from the county, so those properties are owned by the county, actually by its housing authority. And then there's a lot of county subsidy in, in the construction of those. And so the county would have an opinion, I don't think they would object to a preference, but the idea of saying that only somebody from Half Moon Bay can live in housing that was paid for by all the people of San Mateo County...
Right.
Gets to be problematic.
And the last thing I would love to see, some research on, in terms of the sourcing, a couple of examples. I know Silicon Valley Foundation, you know, has a lot of money now that they're talking about. I'm not sure what their templates are, how they're going to distribute it, but I figure the earlier we might be able to get in on what they're looking for to invest in. Wells Fargo Bank has just started a affordable housing initiative. They just hired someone. So this is Wells Fargo Bank, and they're trillion dollars. I can send you the actual job description for that position, because it tells what their intent is. And it's actually spelled out, we want to improve our reputation, we'd like to help them do that. And, and this person will interact not just with the communities, but with all their mortgage units, you know, all the other internal pieces. Again, since they're so close to Half Moon Bay, I figured, wow, only 30 minutes away for their execs to come down and show us their show, and help them establish their showcase affordable housing piece. And maybe there's other, you know, institutions that we're not sure about, but I think the more we could come out with some models that we can present to them, that'd be great. Sorry to take so much time, but I have a couple things here, okay? Thanks.
I'd really liked, I'd like to explore the idea put forward by Pam Dower about limited equity co-op housing. I like the idea of co-op housing a lot, that could be multi-generational, that might even be, you know, a community of physically challenged people, communities of intention, not sure exactly how you put those things together, but I, I think those would be, I agree with Pam, I think that's a good idea for Half Moon Bay, and I've spoken to a lot of people who would love to live in one. So I'd like to explore that, for sure. Harvey?
I think we're putting the cart before the horse, very confused. I certainly don't feel comfortable giving direction on how we'll use the Affordable Housing Fund until we have some sensible project that we could get NOFA, we could get Wells Fargo, we could get Silicon Valley Community Fund, we could get somebody, Habitat, perhaps, if it was a equity investment. Let me get you started. Here's what I would like. You've heard this before, but I'm going to say it till I'm blue in the face. I would like a three-story apartment house with 50 units, restricted to low and extremely low income, and with a strong preference for people who live or work on the coast. And if we had some template for this kind of project, we could then go to developers, we could go to nonprofits, we could go to the county, go to somebody. But I don't think until we have something more definite in mind, just talking abstractly about how we can increase the housing stock is going to get us anywhere. So I would really like a, a definite template, a definite project that would address some of the needs, and we clearly have needs. Anybody who listened to any of the stories from the people who are affected by the housing situation clearly are going to be moved by what's going on. And my idea of an apartment house is probably the most affordable way that we could actually address this real crisis. So that's where I'm, I'm not going to give direction at this point until we have some idea of what we're talking about.
Just piggybacking on that, I want to circle back to Jill's discussion about, you know, being open for business. So if we, if we have an idea, you know, I think we're going to sell that idea better if we make it clear that we're open for business, and entertaining project ideas, and having clear goals and guidelines. You know, I think that's the sort of housing culture, you know, we need to create, so...
Yeah. If I could just, I, yeah, I know in prior discussions, I called it sort of open for business, because I think one thing that I hear that may, or actually, I think it's very clear direction. And I think some of the problem is a little bit chicken and egg, and that's why we're, you know, sounding out some of these other things, but part of it is so much of what you've done. And there, let me start this way by saying the open for business, there's not a for-profit or not-for-profit developer in the county that doesn't know every square foot of land in the county, including Half Moon Bay. So I often get asked about, why don't we produce a list of vacant lots? They, they know every lot that there is, who owns it, if it's for sale, if it's not, number one. But also, some communities have earned reputations for being hostile to maybe any development, or, or maybe it's just affordable development. And Half Moon Bay has been doing exactly the opposite on the community support side, all of the community extensive and huge community meetings, conversations that were held last year, the council continuously saying that additional housing, especially affordable housing, is a top priority. The set aside of general fund is, it's very, it's unusual. It's not unheard of, it's unusual, that was done in this recent budget, and increasing that fund to two and a half million, looking at other ways to increase that fund, for example, a commercial impact fee. Even though fees are a problem, we have to be very, you know, creative and cooperative with our development communities about what kind of fees work. But, that being said, large projects can, can look at fees. All of those things are, say to the developers, oh, yeah, Half Moon Bay, it may be small, it may be on the coast and semi-rural, but it's, it's open for business, we need to talk to those people. It's, I've seen it happen.
You brought up an important point about the fees. So do we want to consider fees? I, I think considering, evaluating fees, having a discussion about that would be a good idea. I mean, it is a form, you know, we're trying to mitigate impacts, rather than just socializing, you know, their costs on the rest of the community, why not, you know, mitigate that? I don't have any problem with mitigation, but you're right, there's, there's a balance there, that we don't want to, you know, scare people away entirely, or, but... there, that we don't want to, you know, scare people away entirely, or, but.
Can you address the empty house thing, idea? I, I'm not sure exactly what that means, is are we talking about commercial or residential when we talk about empty houses?
So your council colleague brought this up in a meeting, I don't know which one, council member, when that was, about an empty house tax. This is something that I believe Vancouver, B.C. has implemented. It's really related to areas where there's a lot of tourism and the short-term rental market has shifted the use of housing units into really more of a, kind of a commercial use, and the concern is that the units are off the inventory, they aren't even full all the time, and they're not contributing to the neighborhood fabric, and there's a number of other components to that. We put that pretty far down on the staff report because we, we think it's interesting, and in fact, there's even a draft policy in the land use plan update that, that cites that, and it could be a funding source for affordable housing. It, it definitely has a relationship, so that, that is one, and if, if you elevate it in priority, we can, we can talk about that. I do want to tell you one thing that I'm going ahead and just doing, the 21 Elements Group, which is all the jurisdictions in San Mateo County are pooling together to those that are interested to prepare a commercial nexus study for a linkage fee, an impact fee on commercial development. This was done quite a few years ago, all the cities were included. Half Moon Bay ended up not adopting a fee at that time, they're going to update the study, we have to pay into that, I've already committed to do that, and there's enough budget. I, I planned ahead for this for the Planning Consultant Services budget, it won't come out of your housing fund, it's less than $10,000, I think it's well worth having our, having this be included, and so we'll report that back to you. I don't think it's going to take more than six months, and we can, we can tell you what they get from it. What's great about it is it will be done very consistently with our, with our cities around us.
That's a good idea, sorry, go ahead. No, I just had, uh, empty, empty commercial building tax.
We would have to do research, we, we don't have experience with it.
I, I would love to see us look at that. We've got two glaring examples of undeveloped commercial properties that are eyesore's on Main Street, and something needs to be done about that.
I actually have some comments when we get to the land use portion, actually, because I think that's going to be really important in sending, you know, the right market signals about what we're willing to accept and what we want to encourage and all that stuff, so.
So I gather you have clear direction. It's a mess, but I think we're all on the same page in that we understand that there is a crisis, and the exact solution is not clear, but we need to work on, on increasing our housing stock.
Well, I think we're, this is a really good start. I mean, I think the, the staff work done for these reports is really good, and I learned a lot this time. So I, I think, you know, I, I feel good about where we're headed.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, maybe if I could try to summarize one of the areas where we were, we were looking for direction, and I'm not at all saying that I heard this directly, but just in listening to what I heard, I'm maybe reading between the lines a little bit, so if I get this wrong, let me know. So one of the slides and questions that was posed was, was the distribution system for these funds, and three options were shown. Doing a NOFA, and then I guess the next one down, call it NOFA Lite, was an RFP RFQ, and then the next one down was called over-the-counter. And what I heard, kind of through the discussion and between the lines, was maybe a frustration of like, we want to spend this money in the best way possible, we do want to leverage funds, but we would like to do it in a flexible way. So if I heard that correctly, the direction I took was that there's a preference for the over-the-counter mark, uh, approach. That approach is almost one where it's first come, first served, and we will evaluate projects as they come in, back to the, we're open for business model. We are not a large city with lots of development going on, with lots of money, we're putting out a formal NOFA, that's a hundred-page document, where there's lots of competition, makes a lot of sense, I don't think. And so I think the staff was trying to convey that, since those ones are more complicated, that the over-the-counter approach is, as Jill was saying, if we just had general direction, that if a developer comes in and says, hey, I know you have 2.5 million, what's the process for tapping some of that money? We, we believe we should say to them, the process is right now, we're talking to you, if you have a project, if it's viable, if it meets the other criteria, you have the land, we have direction from our council that we can say to you that some of that, some of that money will be available, but we do have to bring it back for a final decision. So I heard that there's a preference for that, and, and it seems to me, yeah, trying to do a NOFA or an RFP would just be more process and time, and would not be a good use of our time. There's just not that many projects coming through that, quote, "we're open for business" door right now, and so I think the best way to spend the money is to come up with the cri-, you know, the kind of principles of how, you know, and direct us to start project by project, entertaining the, you know, allowing, letting the developers know that we have the ability with direction from the council to subsidize their projects, details to be determined later, and we do it case by case.
The only issue I have with that is if a developer comes in and says, I would like to build market-rate housing, and 15% of it will be affordable, I'm not interested in giving them any money.
Totally interested, we already have a policy, we already have a below-market rent ordinance that requires that. And so again, when I, when I, when I say we're open for business, come and talk to us, I'm not saying that we're just going to be giving money away with no criteria, we're still going to come back to the council and present to you the option that's in front of us, and you still have the ability to say, you know, that actually does not hit the principles we were thinking of, it's not, and we would do it case by case. But in that example, that developer would have to come and say, I'm going to meet your below-market ordinance of 15%, plus I'm willing to do 40% more. If I, for those 40% more, would you entertain 100,000 subsidy per unit? Oh, okay, that's interesting, we'll bring that proposal back to the council as you start to go through the planning commission process, the planning process.
Okay, that works.
So they would have to be above what's already required, absolutely.
Great.
Just to add to that, I mean, when you were talking about leveraging our two and a half million as being a 10% of what could be a $25 million project, I don't think we're talking market-rate housing, you get all those tax breaks and everything you were talking about, so, you know, we, we have a way of elegantly expressing those criteria to your point of what we're looking for before we start getting drowned with proposals, so. Yeah, okay.
I don't want the developers to tell us what they want to build. I want us to tell the developers what we need. It's just a little tricky in getting the 20 or 30 million dollar subsidy that we need, but that's where I'm coming from. I, I'm not interested in, in, in putting money in the pockets of for-profit developers, I'm interested in building housing for low and extremely low-income people. It's easy to say that I'm interested in, you know, but I am, I just don't really see a path forward, but we're creative here, we have a wonderful staff, and I don't think we should give up. But I also don't think that we should just say whatever the developer wants is, is okay with us. We should have a definite goal, and I, I've given you where I'm coming from in terms of what I would really, really like.
Give some direction. I mean, certainly I think what I hear from a lot of people in town are apartments, you know, I think apartments are going to be really important for us, and it's part of our bigger vision that we want, you know, multi-generational community. We want young singles to be able to live here, we want young families, we want seniors, right? We want a diverse community, and we want diverse housing stock, and right now, you know, we're kind of missing, you know, affordable apartments. So to me, that's like the most, you know, glaring, you know, void in our housing mix.
You know, until my prior point, to help people visualize what a low-income community could look like, based on the numbers and their current income rates, if we could just develop some personas, you know, the type of folks who would fit in to that, you know, what they would look like, describe them, that's what gets people to expand their thinking about this, and gets, helps ameliorate some of the not-in-my-backyard kind of, all that stuff. They don't realize how, what a diverse set of personas fit into these guidelines that we're talking about, right? So I think that would be great. Yeah, thanks.
I, I think we've pretty much come to our conclusions. I wish, I wish it were more concrete, but it's a start, so that's, that's good. And, and we also need five minutes off, so why don't we meet back here at quarter after nine to take the next step? to take the next step? Can we take our seats, please? Please take your seats. We're continuing our housing workshop and considering tenant protection measures.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is just two slides. We want to update you where we are and confirm next steps. And we think we can click through this quickly so we can get to land use. We're prepared to share information about examples in other jurisdictions. Bill can field that if you're interested, but we're going to go ahead and skip that and come right into what we got up to doing locally and status of some state legislature. And I'm going to pass this over to Sarah.
Thank you. So I'm going to attempt to go through this rather quickly. As a reminder, the tenant protection measures came before the city council as part of a conversation that started last fall. And staff received direction to prepare a draft ordinance. We did that, brought it for a study session in January of this past year. That particular draft included four potential measures for the city's consideration. One is mediation that would be available to both landlords and tenants and paid for by the city. The second was an enhanced notice requirement. Most leases require that the landlord provide only 30 days' notice for eviction, and this was a proposal to extend that to 90 days. The third was a requirement that the landlord offer initially a lease term of one year and then subsequent one-year renewals to avoid the problem where leases, after their first year, generally revert to a 30-day period. That's the third one. And then the fourth one that we looked at was a requirement that landlords provide relocation assistance. And so concerns were raised by the community at that meeting, particularly in regards to relocation assistance. And you directed the city staff to do more outreach on these issues. We have paused a bit since that direction in January for two reasons. One, staff has been busy, particularly on the LCP update. But also because there has been movement at the state level around tenant protections. And we really wanted to see where that was going and whether that would impact the city's ability to have tenant protection measures or whether it would essentially moot the question for the city. So the primary bill here is AB 1482. That's the one that sort of left standing. There was a movement in May where a lot of the housing legislation got tabled, but this one has remained on the table. Very briefly, AB 1482 includes provisions for statewide just-cause eviction standards. It includes requirements for some relocation assistance when there is what is called a no-fault eviction for a tenant. And it imposes a rent cap for rent increases. So it's a pretty modest cap. Rent increases can go up to 7% plus cost of living increases to a maximum of 10%. So we've been watching this. One thing to note that I think impacts what the city might consider doing here is the bill has really gotten watered down over time. And there are a couple of aspects of it that I think means that even if it is passed, it will have relatively limited impacts in Half Moon Bay. The primary ones are that it does not apply to newer housing. So housing that's been built in the last 10 years is exempt. More importantly, it also exempts what I would call sort of mom-and-pop landlords. So it does not apply to rentals where the landlord has less than 10 units in their portfolio of properties. And so for folks that are renting a handful of properties, this would not apply. And I think that, based on our understanding of the housing stock in Half Moon Bay, would be a majority of them. So for this reason, we are continuing to look at tenant protection measures and wanted to confirm the approach that we had looked at in January, based on this input and update from the state legislature. The other thing I did want to mention that we have looked at, based on your feedback, between then, January and now, is there was an idea that was brought up at that meeting regarding rental insurance. And there was a proposal that we heard from the community about the availability of rental insurance to help tenants with the relocation assistance that we were considering. And there are a number of public, members of the public that put this forward as an option for the city to consider. We've looked at that and looked for the availability of such an insurance product, but have not been able to find anything that really meets the, what was presented in public forum at that time. The limited amount of insurance that's available is some renters' insurance covers if you are temporarily removed from your housing, mostly due to a natural disaster or fire or other situation like that. We were not able to find insurance products that cover relocation assistance for sort of run-of-the-mill evictions. And so at this time, we don't see that as a viable alternative to the tenant protection measures that we have been discussing. So at this time, I think what we wanted to do is confirm that what the city staff should be doing is finishing up that outreach that we talked about at the last meeting and moving forward with a draft ordinance that really focuses on three issues. So dropping the relocation assistance component and instead focusing on mediation, enhanced notification, and minimum one-year lease terms. And then bringing that back to the city council for consideration. So I think that's the end of my presentation on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I wonder if we ever completed the research in knowing the number of mom-and-pops, the number of units they have. Yeah.
Sure. So we did take a pretty deep dive through our GIS and our, of course, our housing element. And as you saw in the staff report, almost 25% of the city's rental housing units are actually part of our larger developments that are run by the nonprofits that are affordable. Most of the rest of our housing tends to be in smaller products. And that's something that we, we knew was true, but just how pervasive that was, was, was very interesting. So the idea that it's a lot of mom-and-pops is correct, depending on how you define that. So plenty of product out there that's kind of between five and 10 units. Not a lot of big projects in, in Half Moon Bay.
How many?
I did not bring my math, and we can, we can bring that back with...
I would, I would really like to see that.
Okay.
To me, that's critical because it, it helps to explain to me the number of people out there that might be affected by the ordinance that we're passing. And if, if we're going to be passing an ordinance that is protecting our tenants and we have huge public outcry from people that say, "I'm a mom-and-pop," when in fact that person has one rental unit or that, or there are only 20 mom-and-pops in town. I just have no idea what we're talking about, so...
Okay. Let me, I would like a moment just to respond to that, to reassure you. And we will, we will bring you the numbers on that. But that said, by dropping relocation, we would suggest that these other three measures be applied to smaller developments. They, they are not going to be financially devastating to the mom-and-pop like relocation would. That's one of the reasons why we split it apart. We think all three of these measures, well mediation, you know, they don't pay for that at all. That's city-funded. We didn't see any conflict around that. The other two terms, they, they really can manage that without it affecting their, their rates. And it will stabilize actually their tenancies. So we believe that we can work with them. Bill's been doing research on how other cities have been working with their landlords and the kinds of things that have come up in those communications. He's going to help me do that, this part of the outreach. We think the outreach needs to focus with the property owners. We've, we've heard from the community. We understand that. And we, we just need to see what the sticky points are here. And now that we understand the makeup of it better, we can do that. I wasn't prepared to bring you a whole bunch of numbers tonight, but we, we can do that for you, and you'll see them when it comes back, for sure. That said, we're happy to field any more questions. I don't know if there's public comment. Can you pop the slide to the next one? And we just want to make sure that we're doing the right next step.
In terms of public comment, I have two cards, but Paul Grigoryev was going to talk about the increase in rents at Half Moon Village, but he doesn't, he seems to have left. If anyone else is aware of this issue, that would be very nice. Maybe Matthew's going to find him. I don't know. And the other public comment card I have on this subject is from Ruby Salazar.
Hello again. I'd like to, also like to ask the council to consider adopting all tenant protection measures, including relocation assistance. In the city staff report, the only reasoning I saw for why council should not adopt the fourth measure is that mom-and-pop landlords consist of smaller developments with four or fewer units. If this is the case, then why not exclude these smaller developments of four or fewer units? Or add an amendment amount of relocation assistance that mom-and-pop shops can afford? Just because they operate by thin margins doesn't mean it's okay to displace people and not help notify them and help with relocation assistance. I'd like to ask the council to research this more and see how we can add this fourth measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Counsel?
Yeah, I agree.
Me too. Thanks, Ruby.
At the risk of coining a new term, "me too." I, I think relocation assistance makes sense. Mostly to discourage people from rent gouging. And if somebody has four or six or 10 units, I don't think it would be an undue burden on them, you know. So I'm, I'm in favor of what Ruby had to say, that enhanced notification, minimum lease terms, mediation, and relocation assistance makes sense to me. All restricted to landlords of four or more units.
I think, I feel like there's a time element also in terms of how long, let's say landlord has owned a multiple-unit building. Because at some point, you know, their costs are fixed, you know, versus someone having just bought a building and, you know, the expense of that and their coverage of mortgage, et cetera. But, you know, if a building's already paid off, I think the margins there are different. So maybe we could figure out what that might look like here in Half Moon Bay.
Relocation assistance would only be if they are, if their lease is terminated before the one year, if we have a minimum one-year lease contract?
There are a couple of different ways of doing it. The most common way for relocation assistance to apply is anytime you have an eviction that's called a no-fault eviction. That's the way that it's working in this state law as proposed right now and the way that we brought it to you back in January. No-fault evictions generally occur even if someone is on a month-to-month tenancy, but they have not violated the lease and continue to pay rent. But the owner wants to take back the unit either to take it off-market, to rehab and re-lease at a higher rental amount, or to do what's called an owner move-in eviction, where they or someone in their family is moving into the unit. And so it's really in those limited scenarios that relocation assistance generally occurs.
Sorry, just to clarify the research that you and Jill did. Are you saying that if I'm a renter and I want to look around for some renters' insurance, none of them cover a no-fault eviction payment for relocation from what you've looked at?
We looked for insurance products and could not find any renters' insurance that covers that. At most, it was this temporary out-of-your-renters' unit for some sort of fire or other disaster. If other folks are aware of this and want to bring it to the city's attention, we'd be happy to evaluate it. We just did a survey of sort of standard availability. We also talked with some housing experts about this, and we're unable to find any more information.
Which other cities have relocation assistance? Do we know?
There are a few. The one that I can mention in a sense, because it's the most recent, last summer, Redwood City adopted two protections. One is a minimum lease term, 12 months, always. So there's really no more month-to-month lease in Redwood City. It took effect January 1st. And then they, secondly, they adopted a relocation assistance. And the way that theirs works is it is for those, the breaking of a lease, if you will. Because you, it's, if, if a landlord decides not to renew a lease, that's not considered for relocation. But for breaking a lease to take a unit off the market or they want to do a renovation that's going to take a year or things like that. that's going to take a year, or things like that, then it, there's relocation assistance of about three months, and it is restricted to households that are low-income, 80% of area median income or less.
Well, if we're going to go in that direction, something like that makes sense, I think. We don't want to penalize the landlord, but yes, we do kind of, right? We just want some balance there. But nobody else has it, just Redwood City?
There are a number of other jurisdictions in San Mateo County that do. I know that Mountain View does. I believe that Palo Alto or East Palo Alto, I can't remember which one, East Palo Alto does. The city of Santa Cruz recently adopted it. But throughout the Bay Area, I would say roughly a quarter to a third of jurisdictions have some, some sort of relocation assistance.
Just to be clear, if a landlord doubled the rent, and the tenant said, "No way, I'm going to pay it," he or she is then eligible for relocation assistance, is that right?
As long as they're not breaking the lease. Yes, as long as they're not breaking the lease. This is where the interactions between different tenant protection measures really come into play. So as we've talked about in this example that Bill has just given for Redwood City, it's only when a lease is broken. That means it may be more important to have year-long leases, as a way of making sure that protection applies. Likewise, the example, Mayor, that you just gave, if you also had a rent cap, not saying that that's the direction we're going in, but if you also had a limitation on how much you could increase the rent, that then prevents a landlord from essentially raising the rent in order to get someone out without having to pay.
Right. So that example that the mayor gave, now we're in the area of rent stabilization, and that's a separate piece that we haven't moved forward yet with. We're first talking about tenant protection, we've separated those out, but that, I think would go to that. Yeah?
So this AB 1482, if I remember right, hasn't been enacted yet, is that right?
Yes, so right now, it just passed the Senate Judiciary Committee, and it's on its way to the Senate Appropriations Committee. This bill, of all the housing bills, seems potentially most likely to actually pass. There had been intense negotiations between the, I believe it's, one of the Realtor Association groups and the proponents, about the carve-outs, and where this wouldn't apply, and making some modifications. And since that negotiation happened, the Realtor groups have pulled off their non-support of the bill. And so while landlords' associations continue to oppose, it seems like the opposition has really shrunk, and so the bill continues to move forward. I don't know if other, Bill, if you have other thoughts on whether, likelihood or not, but it seems like it's moving.
It just, yeah, it passed the Assembly in a slightly different form, and it passed the Senate Committee so far, with one committee left, so. And California Association of Realtors was originally in favor of Assemblyman Chu's bill. When it got changed over time, they withdrew their endorsement as other protections got added. So the crystal ball seems to say that it's possible, and it's unknown. Timing-wise, we'll know in September, because the legislature will finish the year at the end of September.
In its present form, what is the rent cap, and what is it applied to?
Sure. So the rent cap is, it's either 7% plus a cost of living factor, or 10%, whichever is less. So the maximum amount is 10%. It does not apply to buildings that are, have been constructed within the last 10 years, and it does not apply to rental units where the landlord has more than, or sorry, fewer than 10 units as part of their business operations. It also does not apply to, let me look back at my notes on this. And sorry, that mom and pop is only for single-family residences that are in that, no, that's the wrong one, sorry. Yeah, mom and pop who own 10 units, and sublets of rooms within a house. So if you are subletting out your room, and you live there as well, it doesn't apply in that scenario.
Forgive me, I'm confused. If a landlord has five units, and this bill passes, could that landlord raise the rent more than the 10%?
No. Yes, yes, sorry. Double negatives here, yes. It does not apply to that scenario.
If he had 10 units, it would apply, is that right?
That's right, yes. So more professional landlords.
Yeah, all the more reason to know how many mom and pops we have, and how many units they have.
So if I could do, the mayor, just make a suggestion, we would be very comfortable proceeding with the three items that we showed you there with a pretty low threshold for how many units, and then would suggest having a different threshold for relocation. And we will continue to track this bill, because it has a relationship to it, and we'll try to make sure that we can further it altogether. So we're going to need a little bit of time to do that, but your direction is clear. You want, you want relocation to be part of your package of tenant protection measures, and I think I heard you say that it was okay for it to have a different cutoff in terms of the number of units. And of course, we will bring all that data to you as well. Does that sum it up comfortably?
The issue I have is that relocation assistance is essentially meaningless without rent caps. And I think those two things should be considered together, and if you want to do that after we find out about what the state does, that's, that's okay. So I'm all right with going ahead with an ordinance that deals with the notification, the minimum lease terms, and mediation for the time being.
I don't understand the waiting for the state. If the, if the state is eliminating certain rental units that we may not want to eliminate, it's not going to be helpful to us. I think we need to decide, based on our population of landlords and rental units, what we think is right for our community. And it's, it's good to know what the state's doing, but I don't want that to be directing what we do.
State law applies to everybody.
We can make our restrictions tighter than state law.
I don't know about that.
Under this specific bill, yes, you would be allowed to have restrictions that are tighter.
So that, that's my point, is...
But only if it's workable for our particular community and our mix of landlords, yeah.
So if I, if I understand correctly, for the time being, our direction is to enact the, write this draft tenant protection measure with the three classifications that we've been talking about? Is that, am I putting words in anybody's mouth?
Or is this state, potential state law going to affect that? I mean...
No. I, I mean, it has a little bit of impact on the lease terms, but we can make sure that what happens in Half Moon Bay is what you have intended to happen in Half Moon Bay, regardless of whether there's also a backstop from state law.
Right. So as I understand it, 1482, which may not pass, but even if it does pass, if the landlord has a building with less than 10 units, there's neither rent stabilization or any sort of relocation assistance, if it's under 10 units. So that's why it'd be great to know that. And, and now we know we've got Redwood City, Mountain View, Santa Cruz, East Palo Alto, with some relocation, if a landlord breaks a lease, under certain consideration that we might look at. That's how it all seems, what we've covered, right? Great.
So are we going to move on to land use?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And maybe I'm missing something. I'm still not 100% clear what the direction is.
Okay.
So I've heard two different directions. One direction, your last summary was to just move ahead with the three that we recommended. But previously, there was certainly a robust discussion about, no, it doesn't matter what the state does, there was an interest in adding the fourth item, relocation, under certain circumstances. And so I just want to make crystal clear, I understand it. So the direction is not to pursue that right now.
My, my point with the relocation, and not, not doing anything about the relocation right now, is that we don't know the number of mom and pops, we don't know the number of rental units we're talking about. And with an issue like that, asking somebody to put out three months' rent for somebody, I need to know who I'm affecting. So I think if we leave the relocation assistance for a later date, then we'll cover the bases.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. And so we'll leave that for a later date and proceed with just the three. Okay.
Now we go on to land use?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Council, we, we continue. There are quite a few things that you've seen before, and quite a few that you have not, and we're at a very unique time in policymaking in Half Moon Bay. And so we, we would like to highlight four really interesting things about your draft land use plan that has been working its way through the Planning Commission. We have one chapter to go, we're trying to get it out at the end of this month, it's Public Works, it's been quite a labor of love. That said, back in December, we had a study session with the Planning Commission to review the draft development chapter, really, the one, one of the, one of the key ones that folks have been waiting for. And it was so interesting to prepare for that, because it, the chapter does what it needs to do in terms of supporting coastal act uses, but it was a presentation about being really strategic with where housing should go, how much, and what kind. And it, it's one that we feel you should see and be a part of at this point, to give us some, some broad direction. We, we're not asking you to get way ahead of the Planning Commission, but if you have some, some things that we can share back with them, we'd love to hear it now. So the four items I'd like to cover, one is, the first two are to confirm the direction that you've given us, and to remind everybody in the room, and then of course, we have a new councilperson as well, and make sure that we give you a chance to discuss this. But the concept of the town center, and the direction that you gave us regarding water allocations. And then I'd like to spend a bit of time talking about the priority housing overlay concept, and provisions for affordable, housing affordability. These are two things that were in public comment tonight that I hadn't presented yet, that I think will be helpful to you. Next slide, please. So remembering the town center, that blue border is a border that you've looked at several times, you confirmed it. What it means is, that's where you wanted this plan, policies to facilitate development, to concentrate development in the core of the city, and there were many reasons why, but infrastructure, the potential for live-work, park-once-and-walk, and all kinds of other components of more sustainable lifestyle in Half Moon Bay, and to hold off of lands that are in agricultural use, or some other kinds of uses outside of the town center that were highly valued by you. That has progressed. And can you click one more time? I don't like to do animations, but this is where the town center has evolved, with working with your Planning Commission. It's the same outside boundary, we have now defined three areas of it, and north downtown, the heritage downtown, and the south downtown, they all have different characters. A lot of work has been done to figure out how to make the town center serve up what you directed us, and that can include the kinds of housing you've been talking about tonight, including affordable apartments. Of note, we've completed the exercise of preparing our first draft of the maximum theoretical build-out. This is a, it's really an academic exercise that we're required to do for the Coastal Act. We're reporting out on the order of 2,200-unit capacity that this plan has. It's quite a bit lower capacity than the existing certified LCP, but that does not diminish what the town center can do. In fact, the town center's build-out is about 50% of, of the maximum theoretical build-out, and it's the most realistic place to build. So we wanted you to know about that, and the kinds of policies that are associated with it are relevant to multifamily and mixed-use development. There are planned developments in the town center, they are treated differently, and special densities, higher densities, different approach to quite a few things about them than outside of the town center. You told us that you were interested in how to add housing to shopping centers, we have a, we've got policies about shopping center retrofits, and there's a number of other things that are explored there that we're, we're holding off a lot of other people who want to go tonight, so I'm not going to dig into them. But if you, if you have questions about anything else on that slide, let me know. But the town center...
Sorry to interrupt, but...
Sure.
What town center PDs are you considering?
Well, there's several that are actually highlighted, most of them are in the north town center. So the Podesta PD, there's a, that's the farthest north on that slide, and then the, it's called the, it's still called the Andriati PD, we were calling it the Stone Pine Cypress Cove PD, because it helped people know where it was. But there's room for infill in that PD, there are vacant parcels in that PD, that front on Highway 92. There is also room to infill the Stone Pine Shopping Center with one of those shopping center retrofits, and we've modeled all of that. I've laid out every single one of them with a neighborhood and a park, they, they fit. So you're going to, you're going to see a lot soon. The other one was the south downtown gateway, it's called the Elsie Smith Estate right now. That PD is shown in the draft plan as either being visitor-serving commercial use, or some kind of a mixed-use or residential use. So those were the main ones. Main Street Park is a PD that's built out, that that is shown in the plan as being, not anticipated to change during the planning horizon to 2040. The, there's one more PD, it's the 880 Stone Pine, where we have the city's courtyard now. That one has a focus for, really a conservation corridor, because we have found a fragrant pond, among other things there. So we're, we're parsing all of that out, and we did not target it for housing, because we didn't want to have something that might, might not be able to go forward. We wanted to be a lot more confident, like we can be with, with the other ones that I've mentioned. So that is your town center, and where it's gone. Jessica, go ahead and, if you could go to the next slide. Water allocate, so these are, these are all the big things. Water allocations is obviously a big thing. You asked us to explore how to have policy to allocate, or designate affordable housing as a priority use. In the coastal zone, priority land uses are coastal act priority uses, and they're, they're pretty specifically defined. They tend, the primary ones are agriculture, public coastal recreation, and the kinds of things that support visitors, accommodations, restaurants. Your downtown shopping area is visitor-serving and has a coastal component to it. So those uses, the reason why it really, really matters about housing is that... So those uses, the reason why it really, really matters about housing is that those uses get to use priority water connections, as well as priority sewer connections, but the price differential isn't quite the same thing. As folks know, there is a secondary market for non-priority allocations. That is what all housing has to use at this time. There's about 840 of those left. CCWD, our Coastside County Water District, has about 200 priority connections available. Of course, they're much less expensive, and you can plan ahead for what you're going to pay for those as opposed to being on the secondary market. CCWD also has 200 priority connections for affordable housing. They were set up when those connections were set up. But they're basically on a shelf right now because of permits associated with the pipeline extension and other things that they have done over time where the Coastal Commission locked them down. And as you know, the Coastal Act, when it was first approved, affordable housing was included as a use, a priority use. And it was taken out, I think in the staff report, the year was, it was in the early 80s that it was taken out. So what we're posing in the draft plan so far, and that's already, it's out in the public realm, is that for Half Moon Bay, affordable housing is locally a priority use, and it is directly tied to coastal act priority uses. Because coastal act priority uses are associated with a range of service jobs and a whole array of a population that cannot afford to live here. And if we're hearing about shortages in employment, folks can't get employees to serve at their restaurants. We know that sometimes the farmers have talked about challenges that they have had. And then just hearing what the YLA folks talked to us tonight about in terms of their families, very, very long hours, multiple jobs, the way that it has to be done to actually afford something around here. This is a connection between affordable housing and coastal act priority. Plus, as, you know, you heard Judy Taylor say that if you don't get the Coastal Commission to agree with you, this isn't going to go anywhere. Two things we want to share with you. We are absolutely vetting this with the Coastal Commission staff as we go. They have reviewed every chapter that we have put out, and we meet with them, and we discuss them. They've known for over a year that this was something that we were seeking. But the second thing, and it's in your staff report, and I'd encourage you to, if you have time, to give it at least a skim, if not a deep read. The Coastal Commission adopted a 25-page environmental justice policy in March. It's impressive. It's well-written. It includes housing. And we're citing it already regularly in our staff report. It's incredibly pertinent to the kinds of planning that is going on here for current planning, and obviously it would be for advanced policy planning. So nobody can guarantee that we're going to be able to get our hands on those 200 connections, but the city manager is fully on board with this. We're talking a range of strategies. You're going to see this come out in the Public Works chapter, and we have a well-reasoned approach as to why it's appropriate. So we will do everything we can to get those.
So I'd like to jump in at this point. First of all, I'm concerned about some of your remarks around build-out. I don't think 50% of the remaining build-out should be downtown, in the downtown core, and 50% outside. I think 75% should be in the downtown core and 25% be on the outside. And I'd like us to spend some time in the coming year on the measure de-allocation system to put the squeeze on so that development is clearly favored in the downtown core. This is where it needs to happen. And I think we might be able to improve our case, priority water for housing, if we were to, you know, we have a line drawn around the downtown core that we sort of brand this as the urban housing zone. And the Coastal Commission is going to like the fact that this is in the downtown core, not doing greenfield development. We're not going to get priority water for greenfield development, you know? If I have a chance to vote on it, I'll vote no on it. So I think we need to tighten up what we mean by priority water for housing, and that has to be tied to the geography and the priority development area. Just like A-BAG is doing with priority development areas and priority conservation areas, we need a similar strategy. I don't see the downtown core and everything outside of it as equal in priority or attention or desirability. So if we're going to say that we want development to be focused on the downtown core, all of our policies have to be pushing everything in that direction. Incentives, restrictions, you know, whatever it is. I just, you know, otherwise, we're just, you know, we're back to how we've always done it, is whoever comes forward, wherever they come forward, you know, that's what we're going to deal with. I want us to have an effect, an urban-rural boundary. It's not urban-rural because this is the entire urban area, but, you know, priority development areas and not priority development areas.
May I respond? Because I, you know, I'm trying to present this without the context of the plan as a whole. And first of all, we fully agree, and we've been using the town center boundary as a proxy, in a way, for the urban-rural boundary. Just a couple things, food for thought. We weren't trying to get a 50% in and out. We were trying to plan very strategically to put the development in the town center and to disincentivize it outside. The exercise of the maximum theoretical build-out is unfortunately misleading. We have to count everything, even if it's not likely to happen. What's not likely to happen relative to what's proposed inside the town center is probably outside the town center. The other thing we didn't do is account for transferred development rights. So if that does go forward, that means specifically that some of the count that is attributed outside the town center would move into the town center. So that would shift it. And then, hold on, I had another note. We have also been advised to tighten up some of our agriculture conversions, and so you're going to see some of the numbers outside the town center drop because of that. And so all of these things cumulatively are going to move towards your 75%, 25%. I don't know if we're going to nail that, but we're marching that way. And we were not trying to get a 50-50. And you will see the policies definitely are cut in the way that you're talking. We're trying to emphasize that, though, where we can, and your feedback is really helpful to deliver that straight to the Planning Commission, and I appreciate it. The intent of the, this is what I wanted to say. The intent of the water allocations was for affordable housing. Where we see affordable housing occurring the most is in the town center. There could certainly be policy about when or where you would, if we could get them, they could, maybe you only want them available in the town center. So think about, you know, there's a lot more policy layers to it that are associated with water. But what if you had a PD outside of the town center and they were willing to do the entire thing in affordable housing? So we have a lot to think about going forward, and, but that's where we're at, and that's why those numbers look like they do. And I, you delivered, I got it, I heard you, I'm clear.
I just had a quick question so I make sure I understand. Looking at, so the second bullet, priority connections, $17,000 for 200. So if I'm building up above existing stores, restaurants, visitor sites, if I put somehow another restaurant on top of one, of an existing restaurant, it'd only cost $17,000. But if I wanted to build two apartments above an existing restaurant, that's going to go to $75,000? Is that?
Let's talk about that. So, by the way, that brought up a good point in terms of what a water connection means. For affordable housing, it's not one-to-one. For a large, single-family home, one connection, one house. For multifamily units, we would expect one connection to serve two to three units. So 200 connections for affordable housing could support a significant amount of, it would support the plans build-out for affordable housing. It would be very impressive. Now, the question you asked, we tested that recently with a project that was a priority use, a two-story priority use, and that first floor remained in priority, and the upper floor was converting to housing. Because the ground floor was still a priority use and because there was enough water connection capacity already there, we discussed this in open session with the Planning Commission and with council, and we agreed, since they needed no more connection and they weren't displacing, fully replacing a priority use with a non-priority use, that it was acceptable to make that conversion. Now, that was a test case. We informed our Coastal Commission staff colleagues about it. They were not delighted, but they accepted it. They understood the reasoning. We're proposing to document that and use that because being able to change uses gracefully in a mixed-use downtown area is really important. And when you can't, that's one of the reasons why there's vacancies, because it really locks up and makes it so much harder to rehouse them. Now, I hope that answered your question. So it depends on what, how much water they need. And then, of course, in this case that we had, if it had turned out they would need another connection, we agreed that it would have to be a non-priority connection. We didn't see a way around that.
About other stuff? So I think we need to expand our, allow, expansion of our mobile home parks, or maybe we allow another mobile home park, find a place for a mobile home park?
The plan shows that. I wasn't going to present that tonight, but I can tell you about it. There's two locations in the plan that are encouraging mobile home parks. One of them is already in that designation. There's a site left at Coneyata Cove that has the capacity. It's on the corner. I think there's some storage there. It's kind of hard to tell exactly what the use is. It appears to have room for, I believe, about 40 mobile homes, a significant number of a really great housing type. Half Moon Bay's housing stock, 10% of it is mobile homes. This is really important housing here. So the other location that we thought about specifically for a mobile home park, and then we'll go on to this party overlay where mobile homes could work. Hilltop Mobile Home Park is, of course, on Highway 92. It, there's two sides to it. The north side to the east, right now, you can see that there's some corn growing and some other things.
Used to be goats.
It used to be, I heard it was called Goat Hill, I think, or Goat Farm. We're proposing that that site, I think it's in light industrial, and I have a hard time giving away, I love light industrial zoning, it's my thing, but that's a great site for a mobile home park to expand. And we've talked to the property owner about it. There's comfort with that. The Planning Commission LCP Update Subcommittee was comfortable with it. It's shown on the map in the draft plan. So those two areas have good capacity to add mobile homes. Now, this is a segue to the next slide, if you don't mind. I'd like to tell you about the priority housing overlay because this is kind of the coolest thing in the whole plan, maybe, maybe not. But because so many speakers had energy about this tonight in different ways, skirting around it or directly hitting it, we want to talk about it a bit. This idea is all about housing the local workforce near where they work at an affordability level that is appropriate to the industry where they're working. And it's hitting it in a lot of different ways. This is, can you see that map? I know it's very, very busy. That's a blow-up of the center of town, and I just picked that part because there were so many different examples. If you see the striped, kind of light blue and fuchsia diagonal striped areas, those are all areas that we're proposing to be allowed to have this overlay. And I'm going to walk through them a little bit. It would apply to some of our agricultural properties. So, for example, Mr. Smith spoke tonight. We're showing two acres of this overlay on his property, and the idea is outside of the town center, the overlay would support 10 units to the acre. And he has open space reserve, and I'm only picking on him because he was actually here and put it all in the public forum. He's got open space reserve zoning, which does not allow housing other than the one residence. So this is a big change for that designation. There was support from the environmental community to do that beyond just housing for what could be nearby onsite or nearby agricultural workers, but that, in fact, there were so many service workers at the Ritz, and it was so convenient possibly to that location. We'd love feedback about that because we've got the Planning Commission struggling with, well, is it okay if it's off-site? We'll get background to that. We're also showing it for Ag in, kind of as a floating designation for those who have larger sites, who have told us they would, they need five or six farm labor housing units, and they're just afraid of the process, and this gives them confidence that they could do this. It's also shown on some of the greenhouse sites at the north end of town. Rocket Farms and Schickenberg Farms have some appropriate places on their properties where we've, we're showing it. Moving on from Ag, the other really big priority land use, and so far, we're talking about coastal act priority uses with people who need to support them. Public recreation. The Regional Parks District includes state parks as well as some county parks land. State parks had seven housing units for ranger housing. You know, they lost one. They're down to six. The plan is trying to let them have 10, so a net increase from what they have right now of four. They are thrilled about this idea. We're trying to find the right place for it, but the intention for the plan is to have enough controls so that wherever it ends up, it's appropriate. Because they're near the coast, it would need to be movable, and it needs to not be near Escha or, you know, detract from visual resources. But it probably shouldn't be at the end of Alcatraz Avenue anymore where we have highly active bluff erosion. So giving them an option to move and keep employees here. San Mateo County also has a housing unit on some of their lands. They would like a few more. And this approach to doing that is, and we believe it would need to be for folks who work coastside, either in Half Moon Bay or on the coast. We're not trying to have county employees live on county parkland so that they can commute back over to San Mateo. That is not the goal. So we just want to be very clear about that. Then, public service uses, and this map shows a number of them. The overlay is applied to Hatch, Cunha, and Half Moon Bay High School. It's also applied to the AgcoC, the area where we are. If you ever redeveloped in here someday, maybe you could tuck in some housing units. And two churches that have public And two churches that have public service designations, they are allowed to, in this designation, this is our shelter designation, a shelter by right, but it's not a great location for a homeless shelter. It's a pretty good location from affordable housing, though, as are the two churches that are in this designation. The Lutheran Church off of Frontage Road over by Bath Cunha Country Road has an acre shown here. They could support 10 units. The site right behind you, Our Lady of the Pillar, would be in the 25-unit to the acre category because it's in the town center. That's a right housing site, and it doesn't have zoning for housing right now. So this was an approach to get at some.
So just a clarification. So in these areas, would the housing be like by right?
That is the intent, to move to that, and it also has to be affordable. So we couldn't, we couldn't mandate that for housing in a residential district, but this is an added land use on top of everything else. You can have a church, you can have a community center, you can, you know, whatever the thing is that we've talked about already. And oh yeah, you can have affordable housing too. Not housing. Affordable housing, deed restricted, and we have to, in the policy, it's at that level. In the doing of it, you'll need to decide how, how we're going to do the affordability levels. We would suggest they're going to have to be extremely low or very low. Very unlikely that any of this would be, and none of it would be moderate. You might have a few low. The capacity of this designation, as the draft plan presents it right now, is for 200 units. So that's almost 10% of the build-out in this, this new approach. Now, some of the units are in the town center, some are not, but they are near, we think, where people want them to be. We're able to adjust that build-out. This was in a comfort zone with the planning commission. There's absolutely a way to dial it down, and there's no problem. I can find more room if you want more. So that's something for you to think about over time. We're trying to show that this is just like the affordable housing water connections, that this would be consistent with the coastal act. And that's how this was laid out and the strategy for this type of housing.
I love it.
I do, too.
I certainly would like to see farm labor housing by right, you know, as long as they're not invading Escha or anything like that, I think.
Yeah.
Lutheran church site. If there was any way to squeeze out another acre or two, I will personally move for a Half Moon Bay Medal of Honor to your staff. If there's some, because that is a great location, but a lot of it is sort of protected and it's so much land there, it's just too bad we couldn't, yeah.
I'm glad you kind of like it, maybe. We'll find out more later. Marin County has something like this, but the question is, oh, is anybody else doing this? It has to be really custom. I don't think there's going to be an example that quite fits what Half Moon Bay is about. So it's, it's a new idea, and we'll, we'll study it hard and make sure, if you move forward with it, we'll make sure it's implemented correctly. And click to the next one. This is the last thing I wanted to highlight in the land use plan, and I'm sorry that we're, wow, we had a lot tonight. This is about all of the plan developments. The idea here is recent development in the plan developments that allow residential development has really not been a fit. Like we were just showing with the, the local workforce in, in the housing overlay, the idea wasn't about jobs housing balance, it's about jobs housing match. And, you know, we've had some really large homes come in, in recent plan development build-out, and that is not what people are telling us they need. So all of the PDs, there's a policy, a draft policy, that we've had mostly positive feedback about, but not completely, so I want you to know that, that's trying to direct for more housing affordability just by design, as they say.
And size.
And size, smaller units. There's, there's a suggestion of a, kind of a maximum average size of 2,000 square feet with an intention of having smaller units like cottages and duplexes, triplexes, all that missing metal that Bill was talking about, allowing for the pre-manufactured, bringing back the garden apartment, remembering that in October when we had the community conversation about housing, and we had about 50 pictures of all these different things and how people, they resonated with people. They looked like Half Moon Bay. That was the feedback that we had. That's what all this kind of housing is and the, the strategies and that policy of saying, okay, you're a PD, well then, this housing needs to fit what the community wants, and you're going to have public park too, and you're going to have green infrastructure, and you're going to be designed like a neighborhood. And it's going to be a part, it's hopefully going to be a neighborhood that you're, you're proud to have in your town, as opposed to a development. That's, that's really the theme.
We don't want to encourage McMansions that will be second homes and empty most of the time. Don't want it.
Well, that was enough of that. I don't think there's public comment on this. Are there any cards left in there? Okay. So Sarah and I are going to whip through the end to tell you about some zoning amendments that we are quickly drafting for a study session one week from tonight with your planning commission because just as important as being open for business with the Affordable Housing Fund, we need to be open for business with some of our zoning code. And we've got some really tricky, I can't figure out how to deal with it code, and I'm pretty good at dealing with zoning code, and I can't, this, this one isn't working so great. So Sarah's going to start and talk about the below-market rate and density bonus in her efficient style, and then I will come back to the planning kinds of things.
Thank you. So next slide to below-market rate. Great. So below-market rate, I'm going to talk about below-market rate ordinance and density bonus ordinance. And these two, I think, are helpful to think about together. The below-market rate ordinance is the stick, and the density bonus is the carrot. We are talking about two approaches to ensure that developers are putting affordable housing together with market rate development. As Bill talked about, what now seems like multiple days ago, this is a solution for providing affordable housing that is supported by the development community as opposed to relying on tax incentives, grant funding, the city's Affordable Housing Fund, that sort of thing. So for the, and I should note, the city already has a below-market rate ordinance, and the city already has a density bonus ordinance. So what we're talking about tonight is not doing this whole cloth, but some tweaks that are both intended to encourage more affordable housing as well as to conform to some changes to state law. So starting with below-market rate housing, the below-market rate ordinance, again, this is the stick. It requires market rate developers to build affordable housing when they are developing market rate units, and it's an affirmative obligation that the city imposes on developers. We're talking in particular with the planning commission about three potential major changes as well as some other ancillary items. The first is to look at changing the threshold for when the below-market rate ordinance applies. Currently, this is set at 10 units, and the planning commission will be considering a reduction down to five units. This comes out of experience with planning staff that the types of developments we're seeing are in this less than 10-unit type, and so we're not capturing the possibility of getting affordable housing for the types of projects that are currently moving forward in the city. So that's the first item. The second is changing the scope of the below-market rate ordinance's application in response to changes in state law. So in 2016, there was a court case called Palmer versus City of Los Angeles that called into question whether cities could impose BMR ordinances or inclusionary zoning on rental units. The concern was that it was in conflict with Costa Hockings. The legislature, however, responded to this in 2017 and said, yes, we do want cities to be able to impose below-market rate ordinances on rental properties. And so as a result, many jurisdictions have now updated their BMR ordinances to apply more broadly. Currently, the city's ordinance only applies to for-sale developments, subdivisions, that sort of thing. And the proposal would be to expand that to capture rental or mixed-use sort of private projects as well. And then finally, we are looking at changes to the potential production requirement. So currently, the way the city's code is drafted is that you have to, developers have to provide 20% of their units as affordable housing. And then the code sets targets, and so within that 20%, some of it must be moderate, some of it must be low, some of, some of it must be very low. So we're considering, for a couple of reasons, looking at shifting that potential allocation. Bill brought up earlier some information about some jurisdictions looking at actually this being a place to protect or to encourage that moderate, missing middle moderate where there's not other grant funds available. On the other hand, very low and low-income housing are the things that we are not seeing any production of in the city right now. And so this is a place for further discussion, and we welcome thoughts on that right now. I will note, one thing we're, one reason why we're evaluating this is the city's 20% threshold, there's a possibility that we may need to drop, drop it down. There's a requirement in state law that if you aren't meeting a certain target for your above-moderate RENA allocation, they actually can't amend your ordinance unless you do a bunch of other steps and get HCD approval. We don't know if we're, if that's going to hit us right now, we're working through the numbers on that. But if it does, we would consider recommending dropping it down to 15% because that would mean that we didn't need that HCD approval and oversight. So it's just a little wrinkle. Staff is working, going to work with HCD on that and update you on that further. So that's below-market rate. I want to switch next to density bonus. So density bonus is the flip side of, of the BMR ordinance. It is the carrot that we offer to developers, and it says that if you provide certain levels of affordable housing, then you get certain incentives for doing that. Incentives come in a number of different forms. They are both the density bonus, so you can build more of your market rate housing if you meet certain affordable housing levels. They also come in the form of incentives or concessions, which are things like you could encroach into the setback, or you could build above the height limitation, or you could have reduced parking ratios. So specific tweaks to development standards that would allow the developer to either accommodate the density or to otherwise have sort of a more flexible approach. So a couple of things here. This, this ordinance is very driven by state law. There's a very prescriptive requirement in state law that requires all jurisdictions to have density bonus ordinances, and then it establishes what standards have to apply. So the city has less flexibility in this area than in the below-market rate context. One thing that's interesting is there had been some back and forth between state courts and the legislature about the interaction between density bonus law and the coastal act, where it has landed and what the code currently says is that the coastal act still applies, and you can't have a density bonus project that violates specific provisions of the coastal act. However, it also directs cities to attempt to harmonize the density bonus concessions, density incentives with the coastal act priorities. And, you know, sort of the takeaway from this is unless you have sort of a clear conflict between coastal act and the density bonus, it's not common practice to try and turn something down based on more generalized coastal act priorities. So the city's code was last amended in 2010. Since that time, there's been a number of pieces of state law that have changed. So the work that we're doing is largely to bring the density bonus ordinance into conformance with state law. Some of the main things that we're looking at is extending the amount of time that units have to stay categorized as affordable from 30 years out to 55 years. We're also looking at changes to allow density bonuses on commercial properties when commercial developers partner with residential affordable housing developers such that the commercial property owner sort of kicking in or contributing in some way to the development of that affordable housing. This is a more flexible approach that could allow more additional affordable housing and is required by state law. And then one other pretty significant change is there's protections now built into the density bonus ordinance that prevent developers from getting density bonuses when they first demolish or otherwise convert existing affordable housing. And so we are making sure that those protections are in place in the city's code as well. So those are the, the changes that the planning commission is evaluating, and, and we hope to be bringing those forward. Jill has some other ones to talk about as well.
Homestretch. Mixed-use districts, you have four of them. We're focused mostly on the downtown area. The, the picture there is, everybody can see it, is, what is that? That's a house, right? Okay, that's a house that converted at one point in time to an office. And when the owner now wanted to use the house as a house, we had to take them to a public hearing before the planning commission because we require a use permit to have residential development in, throughout the downtown mixed-use districts. So we're going to get rid of that, and we hope you support it. It's, use permits, the purpose of them is to make sure that uses are compatible. The fundamental aspect of having a mixed-use downtown that includes a vibrant array of non-residential and residential uses is that we're making a statement that these uses are compatible. We do not need this review. We would also like to have some exemptions from the CDP process, the coastal development permit process. If there's a conversion of existing development from a non-priority use, such as an office, to housing, like maybe on a second story, the impacts of that change are really, really minimal. It could change back someday. You're not losing a priority use. You're not getting a bigger building envelope. The parking demand is substantially similar. We would like to review that with a building permit, and we'd be excited to be able to do that. There's, there's been a number of folks who said, oh, I don't, I just don't want to get a use permit in a CDP and visit your very smart and nice planning commission. Okay. And then Pillar Cedas Creek to Correios, I've heard somebody call that the four magic blocks. We're a little concerned. This isn't quite housing spot-on, but we need, we think we need to protect the ground floor uses. Currently, offices allowed on the ground floor, and we are going to lose, we've lost some space. We're going to lose more space. If there's vacant buildings, they are exposed and vulnerable to not the kind of vibrant retail, pedestrian-oriented, visitor-serving coastal act supportive uses that you want. So you'll, we will do outreach to our downtown folks. We know they're going to have some feedback about this. They may be concerned. This is pretty standard fare in most other cities as being restrictions that are really common. Next slide. R2 and R3, the two key things we'd like for consideration. The R2 and R3, we don't have that much. Those districts are precious, and we would like to add a use permit requirement for anybody who wants to to add a use permit requirement for anybody who wants to have a single-family home come in on one of those lots and have findings about why the lot is not viable for the duplex or the triplex. We really need to preserve that acreage, there's so little of it. And we're also looking at a tweak to the parking and a few other things just to make the lots work better. Next slide. This is the last zoning amendment. We've talked about parking. Parking is a big deal, and you will see some proposals to reduce the required parking in the downtown area in particular for both multifamily and mixed use. And the idea is to leverage what we've learned from the Planning Commission and their granting of parking exceptions, and to right-size our parking towards what their evaluation resulted in. And of course, we're cross-checking it off of other city ordinances, and we all have our own practice with mixed-use parking. So we have some ideas pretty well-cooked for Planning Commission to kick around and get rid of that garage requirement. Every single housing unit in Half Moon Bay that's proposed, other than an ADU, is supposed to have two garage spaces. It doesn't fit the form of your beautiful downtown, and it's very expensive and often ugly. And you know, if the Planning Commission doesn't need to be granting exceptions, the developer can be confident about what they are laying out and fitting on the property. Again, it's that we're open for business, this is what works, it fits, let's move to the next step. And that is all, yeah, that just took four hours. If you have any more feedback on land use or zoning, we can take it now, or you can send Bob an email and I can filter it then.
I just have one last one. So you and I have talked about this before, you know, like the lot on Poplar Street that has the one driveway serving four manufactured homes. I think that looks really nice, and I think we ought to find a way to, through zoning, to allow that, more of that. Tuck it into existing, you know, neighborhoods.
I had one more. Originally, Michelle Dragony was going to try and be here tonight to revisit her idea of allowing limited permits for small campers on driveways. Remember that one? Yes. And I looked through, she sent me her initial ordinance, and I said, well, you know, there's a lot of resistance to having small campers on driveways, sort of a not in, a very strong "not in my backyard" kind of issue, right? And I said, you know, perhaps we can try a pilot with very limited, you know, maybe one on a block, define what a block is, make sure it's small, make sure a person can take care of sewage. She'd have to get all the neighbors to agree to that, remember that was a piece of it. And because she's had a good experience with a couple of young folks who had a camper, and all with the intention of preventing homelessness, which is why we want tenant protections. You know, a little drop in the bucket like that can help. And maybe some blocks would be more amenable to it others if it's the right folks. And again, they would be short-term, you know, maybe six months to 12-month permit, which could easily be revoked if anyone violates any of the ideas. So, yeah, so she couldn't be here tonight, and I just wanted to put that on our brains, and I can sort of work with you, maybe looking over and see what we may or may not be able to do it. And might not ever make enough votes here to pass, and that's okay too. But I think it's just worth a voice because it's a small idea and might have a small impact, but I think it's a dignified idea, so.
I just want to second this, this housing overlay for workforce housing is magnificent.
This has been excellent, long, deep, but excellent. Thank you.
That's our sum-up of what's next. We've got back-to-back Planning Commission meetings that are right in the zoning and the policy area. And our whole goal in life is to bring you a land use plan this fall that you can start working on. So thank you for your input tonight, that was incredibly helpful, and we appreciate all the energy that you had through this study session. And we know that you enjoyed having Bill here, and of course Sarah, and we're a happy team, so thank you.
Thank you to the three of you. I wish we had more people to applaud, but this has been amazing.
Moving on, we're going to have a very brief mid-session legislation grants update report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have Alex Gibbs here with us. He's from our lobbying firm, Towns and Public Affairs, and he will provide the council with a legislation and grants update as we are at the mid-session mark.
Hello, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for having me. That was hugely informative, so I did appreciate being around to hear that housing study session. Obviously, lots of housing bills going through Sacramento, as we heard, about 1482. I can confirm everything they said was accurate, and that, looking into that crystal ball of prognostication, I would concur that that's likely one of the more, one of the more likely bills to pass and likely be signed by the governor. Currently, and I know I'm kind of digressing a little bit here, we don't have a position on 1482, so should we want to take one? That's something that we can certainly discuss coming up here shortly. So, thank you for the introduction, Mayor. I will now get into just a brief grants update and then touch on legislation. At any time, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me. So getting starting with grant writing, I'm just going to recap very briefly what we've been doing. I can let you know that the first of this month, we submitted the Coastal Conservancy Climate Ready Round Six application for the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan project. This was in consultation with your staff, and I would like to tremendously thank Brittany on staff, who did a wonderful job on not only this grant, but also the Priority Conservation Area Grant that I'll talk about next. So this is the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan project. It will involve relocation of the coastal trail to combat against the effects of climate change, specifically erosion on the bluffs. And it would also take measures to combat the actual erosion itself. This is a total of a $3.7 million project, and our grant was requesting $900,000 from the Coastal Conservancy. The next one is another Coastal Conservancy Priority Conservation Areas Grant. This is the PCA grant. This one was just submitted yesterday, in fact, on July 15th. And this is for the Pillar Point RV Park Public Restroom Project. This project totals roughly $896,000, and we requested roughly $300,000 from the state. We should find out about both of these grants in likely two to three months-ish is kind of the timeline typically. Once again, we'll be working very closely with staff and get back to you on any updates as these move forward. The next opportunities that we're pursuing, one is the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments, or CCAG. This is for their bike and pedestrian facilities grants. We have applied for these and been successful in the past. This one is being led by Maz and his team. The project is the East Side Parallel Trail Project, which looks like you're familiar with. And this is at a total cost of $750,000, requesting roughly $350,000 from the county. Finally, due next month is the Proposition 68 Statewide Parks Program Grant. I can let you know that at the moment, we're going to be applying for the Carter Park Project. This is once again a grant that lots of different staff are working on. It's obviously a huge project that you're going to hear more about here later this evening, but would definitely like to thank Karen and Maz and Matthew on staff, who have been doing a tremendous job on this project. I do not have a total dollar amount for you, as that is going to be discussed later today, and that would certainly impact what our grant request would be. I can let you know that the maximum grant request for that Prop 68 application is $8.5 million. That, that's obviously a very large dollar amount. With demographics in the city and the competitiveness of the project, I would likely say that our ask amount's going to be closer to the $4 to $5 million range.
So this Prop 68 money is from which agency?
This one is from the Department of Parks and Recreation, which is a great question. Obviously, Prop 68, massive bond, $4 billion in funding for parks, recreation, water, and several other items. This grant in particular is the statewide parks round three application, roughly $650 million available statewide to be divided amongst multiple rounds. This is just round one of funding, where it has roughly $350 million in it. So I anticipate applying for this. Carter Park, fantastic project that aligns very well with the goals of the program. But certainly for future funding rounds, potentially that or other projects around the city, so something we'll be certainly working closely with staff on. Switching gears to legislation, unless we had any grant questions? Perfect. So, legislation, obviously, we are now in the summer recess. The legislature broke for recess on July 12th. That was also the last day for legislative policy committees to meet and pass bills out of the Second House. So if your bill was introduced in the Senate, that would be the Assembly and vice versa. Just a quick look at the legislative calendar going forward for the rest of this year. August 12th, so a month from the start of recess, they will reconvene. August 30th is the last day for fiscal bills to pass committee, so that is out of appropriations. We heard that's where 1482 and several other bills are heading at the moment. September 13th is then the last day for legislation to be passed before interim recess begins. That is the cutoff that will give the governor 30 days to sign or veto legislation. That falls then on October 13th. So, quite a bit to do, but like I said, we are currently in recess, which gives us a time to meet with our local legislators, state-elected officials, and discuss some of our priority bills that maybe haven't reached their final destination, or it looks like there could be some additional tweaks to some of the language there. So with that, I'm going to get into just some of our priority bills. You should have a copy of the position bills, priority bills, and housing priority bills, so three different lists for you there. I'm going to get into just some of our priority bills, and I will make a note, I apologize, SB 5 was omitted from our position bills. That was just an error. We do have a support position on SB 5, that is the Senator Bell bill. I can let you know that I was in committee last week to testify in support on behalf of the city, and that it was successful. This is a measure that would provide a source of funding for affordable housing. So getting back to the discussion that previously just occurred, this could be a fantastic tool and resource to utilize for leveraging your existing affordable housing funding and securing new sources of funding that previously weren't there. So that's on its way to the Appropriations Committee, but I can tell you that there's been a lot of support. Previously, there were some issues with some of the education advocates that felt that this bill could be redirecting funds. However, there is the state mechanism to backfill any of those funds, so they would not be losing out, and the larger statewide organizations did remove any of their opposition. So with that, in no particular order here, and I apologize for that, I'm just going to be going through our priority bills, and if you have any questions, please let me know. And once again, I apologize, before I do that, the big item that just happened in Sacramento this, over the last two months, is obviously the passage of the budget. I can go into that very briefly if there is a desire. Otherwise, I feel like everybody is well-versed on what just passed. So, moving forward to legislation, I just touched on SB 5. AB 516, this is a bill by Assemblymember Chu, the authority to remove vehicles. This was a bill that would have impacted towing for vehicles that are inoperable or have been in the same location for 72 hours. At the time that the council took a position, the bill was in the process of being amended. Unfortunately, the amendments for our purposes generally made the bill worse, and it extended that period to 10 days before you could notice a vehicle for, or tow a vehicle or move it, essentially. Since been amended down to five days, but that is five business days, and it has the 72 hours that you have to wait before the five-day period kicks in. So essentially, you have to live with a vehicle in front of your residence or wherever it may be for eight days. So problematic. You would additionally need to, when you do ticket them at the end of that period, provide alternative safe parking options within the city, so that could potentially be a map of other locations that they could move their vehicles to in the city. Lots of opposition from local government stakeholders, not only for quality-of-life reasons, but for environmental issues as well. As the mayor pointed out when we first discussing this bill, there is the potential for vehicles that had environmental concerns that were leaking or things of that nature to be stuck in place, which can be very problematic. Moving forward, before we get to the housing bills, AB 849 by Bonta, this is an elections and local redistricting bill. This would essentially force cities to go to district. There was issues previously with the cities going to redistricting, and whether or not this would impact us now that the city has in fact done that. We're in close conversation with the author's office on this. We have gotten some verbal assurances that this bill is really intended to go after the bad actors, and we certainly do not fall into that category. However, that could open us up to potential litigation if the bill is interpreted in unintended ways. So for those reasons, we're still continuing our conversations with the author's office and hope to have some more of his intent essentially sussed out during the floor or future conversations to prevent us from being open to that liability.
Do you think it'll pass?
I do. I think that the way that it's gone through the process, it likely will pass. It's seen as a good government bill, it's just the question of those unintended consequences, as we've seen with recent lawsuits. I think the true question will be whether or not the governor signs it. At the moment, he hasn't really made any indications in either direction. And I would say similar for 1482 and some of these other bills, that while we feel that they will likely pass the legislature, it's the first year of a new administration, and we really don't know what the governor's appetite is going to be for providing vetoes. I'll move just directly to the housing bills. If there are any bills that you have individual questions about, please let me know. Some of the ones that I was previously going to touch on was Assemblymember Mullins' bill, AB 825, the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. This bill has advanced to the Appropriations Committee, and I understand that there are some local ties to this potential district, so congratulations on this. I understand they have been made public, so I'm not jumping the gun here, but we do anticipate that that one will be signed by the governor. So moving on to housing, we've got a couple of big ones left. I do want to touch on ADU bills, since that was something that was just discussed here. This is something that Jill and staff and I have had an opportunity to discuss somewhat. There are several ADU bills that are still alive and active and moving forward. One of them that I want to just touch on right away is AB 587 by Assemblymember Friedman. This is a bill that there's been some consternation on regarding, it essentially would allow for ADUs that were constructed by nonprofit organizations to be sold separately from the house that they are connected to essentially, which could be extremely problematic. However, the bill is written in such a narrow way that it's really only intended for Habitat for Humanity Homes. Once again, getting into the issues of parceling, for specific parcels that would have two homes on them, and how that would work is yet to be seen. However, the bill is much more narrowly focused than what opponents may have you believe. So it's something that we're certainly monitoring and watching very closely, but the bill is currently, I think, tailored in a way that I don't believe would impact the city. I think this is a conversation we were just having as to whether or not you did have Habitat for Humanity Homes. Habitat for Humanity homes constructed here? Not at the moment?
Not yet.
Okay. So this would be something going forward, should it be passed and enacted, that we would want to be mindful of. The other three bills, AB 68 by Assemblymember Ting, AB 881 by Assemblymember Bloom, and SB 13 by Senator Wykowski, all affect very much the same parts of state code. So for those reasons, these three bills will need to likely conform into one. And this is the time during recess that they're having those conversations to essentially see what provisions would remain in a final bill. For the most part, they regulate ADU setbacks, parking requirements, processing and approvals from the city, which in our initial conversations have just been something that isn't too problematic for the city. The biggest concern at the moment would be the owner occupancy provisions, as that is a law on the books currently in the city. Only one of the bills has a sunset clause for owner occupancy provisions, and that's SB 13. The others contain them in perpetuity. SB 13 would sunset that after five years. Tough to tell what's going to make it into a final version of the bill. All three of them will likely go through Appropriations Committee. So once again, working very closely with the authors and your staff on those bills. Currently, we don't have a position other than watch, but we'll make sure that we keep you abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, I agree. I think the owner occupancy is really important. I think anything that takes that away, we ought to oppose.
Okay. Would that be something at the moment that we would want to weigh in now?
I think we would want to communicate that. As long as they're going to be crafting the consensus bill, that we ought to make it clear that, to me, that's a really important local control issue, affects neighborhood character and all that stuff.
Sure. Okay, certainly.
I agree. I move that we extend this meeting to 11:30. It can end earlier than 11:30. About a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, I'm happy to take that direction, and we'll work with staff on crafting a letter, and I will personally go and meet with staff in the Capitol as well to let them know our concerns prior to getting a letter. So I'll be in the Capitol tomorrow. Last item is just AB 1718, SB 8, by Assemblymembers Levine and Senators Glazer respectively, the state park, state coastal smoking ban on beaches. Both of those are moving forward. Those will likely need to conform as well. But those are both bills that's supported by the city and keeping in line with municipal policy as well.
Do those have a better chance with Governor Newsom?
I believe so, given his track record in San Francisco and what he's supported in terms of combating big tobacco usage, if you will. I think he likely will sign this. So with that, that was my very quick legislative and grant writing update.
Well done. Very good.
We appreciate your brevity. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Same here.
Great, thank you so much.
Next item is the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Update.
There is no penalty for brevity.
I think, in general, individually, we've had conversations about this. I think the report was pretty comprehensive, and with that, we'll go through a very, very, very fast run through the PowerPoint and get there. So go ahead, Maz.
Thanks, John. Maz was a city engineer, so for tonight, we're here, and the proposed recommendation is to adopt by motion, accept the recommendation of the Advisory Committee on the barrier design that we're going to present tonight, and direct staff to continue with the design and environmental phases. So a brief, just, we're going to go through it. Yeah. So some of the rehab status, so these are some of the stuff that we've completed on the project. We've completed the topographic survey, the channel survey, we've started the hydraulic and hydrology analysis, we've done some of the alignment and some of the seismic work. Next, please. Some of the main items in progress, utility coordination, of course, can take a long lead time, so we're working with AT&amp;T, some of the other utility companies in the area that have infrastructure close by. We're getting ready to start on the environmental compliance soon, and then what we're here for tonight is the barrier design, which is the main component that has a lot of, has a lot of weight into how we proceed forward. So why, what's the issue with the barriers specifically? There's a new safety requirement from the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans. It's the testing, what's being required now is basically a crash-tested barrier. It must be, is required for any implementation of any bridges, historic or not, anywhere in the country. And this starts, this goes into effect on September 1st of 2019, as far as the barriers needing that crash-testing requirement, and projects need to be, I think, starting construction by then? That's the requirement, if they weren't, if they don't have to meet that requirement. But for us, obviously, we're at the point where September 1st is around the corner, so that's something that we're working for, towards. So what does that mean? The crash-tested barriers, they're very specific. There's two typical designs, which we'll show in a little bit. But from that, we can't stray away too much as far as any major modifications to the structure without further testing. We have to be careful with any obstructions that are being proposed between the traveling in that barrier. We can't have any vertical projections in that barrier. This is more specific to the crash-testing requirements in that this vehicle needs to hit this barrier at a certain speed, at a certain angle, and not flip over and go into the creek. That's really the requirement around it. And then last but not least, the crash cushions are going to be required at the edge of each of these barriers, and they're very prominent. They have, you know, black and yellow signs. They're intended to be prominent, so we'll have some more, we'll show you some details there. Next, please. So here's our existing Main Street Bridge barriers. So when we're talking about the barriers, there's three components in our existing configuration. You've got the existing bridge vehicle barrier, which is the white concrete structure with the pilasters, which are those columns at the end. That's really as far as the surface, what the major historic component, as far as the visual impact is. We have the approach vehicle barriers, which are, which were added on later in the '70s, I believe. Those are the metal ones that are just a projection along Main Street in line with the existing concrete barrier. And then we have the pedestrian barrier, which is the wood barriers that are on the outside of the pedestrian walkways on either side. Next, please. So these are the two types that are ready and approved by Caltrans. There's this concrete type on the left. It's a slight modification from a K-rail. There's an optional handrail on the top of it that's in the picture on the left. And then on the right side, there's the steel crash-tested version of it. Both of these options could be painted, but other than that, there's not a lot we can do on the aesthetics or the look of it. Next, please. So how are we, how do we get to where we are with the bridge? So we've looked, looking back at the history here, there's been several phases. So one of the first periods that we looked at was the period between 1900 and 1920. What we've seen as far as the records, and what we've been able to come up with are, basically, we have this exist, we have this existing bridge. There was no walkways and sidewalks on either side of it. There was no column or pilaster. It was a very simple arch structure with a concrete barrier on the sides. Next, please. And then somewhere along the line around the 1930s, this is what we're calling Phase 2 for the purpose of this presentation. Somewhere along the 1930s, there were some aesthetic components that were added to the bridge structure. There were some, some parts, some pieces that were added to it. There was no structural, nothing that we could find that was any structural component to it, but it was an added visual piece to it, which were the two, which were the four columns that are, that are very visible in today's bridge, the pilasters, correct? Next, please. And then we have the 1940s phase, which is the addition of the walkways on either side. And through, and from that point, on one side, sorry. And then after that was when we started looking at, bless you, after that is when we started looking at the second, addition of the second walkway. But as far as the historical period, we're really looking between 1900 and 1950. Next. So where does that put us? So what we've looked at is, we've, after a lot of conversation with the stakeholder groups, with Caltrans, with, we had the bridge barrier specialist that was from Sacramento that was working with our staff for a few hours. They've been very, they've been working with us as much as they possibly can, and so we've been able to come up with one concept that is being presented here tonight. There was three options that was presented to the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. And this particular option here before you tonight, which is option three of what they've looked at, is what was unanimously voted and approved by the Advisory Committee as a recommendation to the council. What this is doing is looking at really the earlier historic period, and what it does is we're looking at recreating that first initial historic implementation of this bridge. There were some other options. I think when we talk about the testing requirements for the crash testing, the vertical projections is where the pilasters come into play. With that requirement for the vertical projections to be offset, what it ended up doing to the design was moving the columns, the pilasters, into the walkway. Although we can still meet ADA, it created an awkward configuration, not having it in line with the, with the bridge barrier itself. And then there were some, also some conversations regarding the historic integrity and whether moving it outside of the line is still meets the integrity of what we're trying to achieve. So with that, what we're proposing is this option here tonight. So again, it goes back to the concrete structure, look and feel of the original construction. What we're proposing to include on the outside, which would be for the pedestrian safety barrier, would be the type, the steel-type barrier that was, that is crash-tested. There are going to be components, segments of the bridge where you won't have the concrete barrier, but we still have the embankment to deal with, so from that perspective, we still need a crash-tested barrier. So the thought was, we'll put the steel barrier on the outside, and then in the concrete section, we'll put the concrete type. And it can be painted, which is nice, so that we can match at least the existing color that we have out there, keeping that piece of it. But the other component that we have to consider is the crash cushions, which you see here with the yellow and black signs on each edge.
The crash cushions, do they have to be like a standard look, or could you make it like, look like a bumblebee?
Unfortunately, there's not much leeway there. The sign, it's very, it's very rigid as far as the, what's been approved.
But it's five years off to leave, four years off to be used.
Yes.
So maybe bumblebee.
We'll definitely get to the schedule very soon. But yeah, unfortunately, there's not much we can do with the crash cushions. We've talked about, you know, the dimensions of it, the width of it, the height of it, the length of it, that's pretty much defined. The sign itself, that's adhered to the edge, the end of each side, again, that's, at the current standard, it's, it is what you see above.
Excuse me just a second. These crash cushions are attached to the concrete bridge?
There is a steel crash cushion that is adjacent to the concrete barrier? That's, that's the component we're looking at, correct.
Is that attached to the concrete?
It abuts right up to it, yes.
It just abuts it?
Yes.
So if somebody ran into it, they could displace it onto the walkway?
No, it's made, it's made, yeah, it's a crumple configuration. So it's designed to dissipate the energy, and it's designed to crumple in a certain configuration.
But we're required to have the steel crash fence someplace, and so we're putting it on the pedestrian side, or on the?
So for the, for the steel, yeah, for the steel bridge barrier that I was talking about, that's on the exterior of it, because there are, the segment of the concrete barrier does not fully align with the width of the channel. So you have the area where you have the embankment, the creek banks that have the slopes that go down.
Right.
That area isn't exactly covered by the concrete piece, so we have to extend the crash cushion.
Okay.
So one thought was that we would use the pedestrian barrier that we would need regardless, and have that as the crash-tested approved model.
Got it. And the pedestrian barrier has to be steel?
That's correct. In this, yeah, in this configuration, correct. They would need to be that steel.
I think the other critical piece to that is the closest thing we have to resembling the existing wood fence that we've got out there in terms of the individual panels, which can be painted. And so it's the closest to the existing conditions even for what's the handrail side of the bridge. So that's the other reason why we didn't recommend one of the other barriers.
Got it.
Because it's closest aesthetically.
If there's no other questions, we'll go to the next slide, but we can certainly come back to this if there are more. So here's our tentative project schedule. So we are right now in the barrier selection phase. This is a very critical component. It has implications to the selection of the bridge type through Caltrans. It has implications to the environmental document, the historical review, and so this is really the critical path right now. Once we get through this phase, and we're still in conversations with Caltrans, we're confident that what we're proposing tonight meets the requirements. We still are going through the historic group in Caltrans, so there are, there are some other steps that we still need to take, but at this point, we feel confident that we can move forward with this option, and it'll meet all the requirements for both the safety component as well as the historic component. And then once we get through, so once we get through the barrier selection type, we're going to look at, working on the 35% design package, in stride with the environmental document, and we'll move forward with that review process. We're looking at early 2023 as far as the start of construction. Next, please. So again, next steps, barrier design, selection, and then we'll look at the approvals from Caltrans regarding the barrier type, and then we'll start with the environmental document. Thanks. So again, here's the recommendation. That's pretty much the gist of the conversation, of the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you or the public may have. Thank you.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee on the selection of the barrier design for the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and direct staff to continue the design and environmental phases of the project.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thanks for working through all these issues. This has turned out to be amazingly complicated, and you guys are pulling it together. Thank you. Yeah.
They don't let me talk to Caltrans very often, they, which I'm thankful for.
The penultimate agenda item is the Carter Park renovation project update, Phase 1.
So it's a cast of thousands going with this one. So I'm leading this off just as an introductory, so at the table, you'll see a familiar face, many of you, no mark from our So at the table, you'll see a familiar face, many of you know Mark from our prior work with the library. Mark has come on with a new firm, ELS, who specializes in venues and, and performance venues and parks. So we're really thrilled to have him here. I'm here just to sort of kick this off with a, with a reminder to you and the community that we are in the, in a, in a process that will require significant work. We are having a biological resource assessment and an evaluation done of this site. We're in process to get that under contract. We've done previous work. We recognize that this park is next to the Pillar Cetus Creek. It has riparian vegetation and buffer issues that we have to deal with. And we will require coastal development permit through the Planning Commission and an environmental process as well, certainly. We haven't landed on exactly what that looks like from that perspective. But this is a challenging site. It's a great opportunity. We're not going to short shift this whole deal in terms of going through the appropriate processes. What we're here tonight is simply to kind of give you an update and talk about where we are and where we're going. Thank you.
Great, thank, oh, thank you. And it's nice to be back speaking in front of you all again. Next slide, please. I'm going to go really quickly. I just want to begin by saying that Carter Park's improvements were one of the priority items in the 2018 master plan for Parks and Recreation in the city. Next. And among the recommendations they had were the creation of a permanent stage, amphitheater seating, habitat protection, and improved lighting and signage. And I'll show you in a little bit how we're addressing all of those. Next, please. We began this phase of work with an extensive community outreach process. We had three community meetings. The first was a focus group with representatives of three local performing arts groups. Second, although one was unable to attend, but they got us their comments. The second was with immediate neighbors, mainly Cypress, Cypress Cove Homeowners Association representatives. And again, the owners of the Stone Pine Commercial Center sent us in their comments. The third was an open community design workshop held in association with a Park and Recreation Commission hearing. Next, please. At the same time, we conducted a survey, both, it could be a written survey or an online survey. And according to Karen, it was one of the best responses to a community outreach survey that the cities had. We got 102 responses during the time that it was open, and it was almost overwhelmingly in support of the project, which was really exciting, because I know that doesn't always People expressed what they'd like to see happening in the park, and among other things, there was a lot of support for having a playground and picnic area there in addition to what we had talked about through the master plan. And the concerns were raised, and the concerns were pretty unanimous, the main ones being parking, noise, trash, and concern about the homeless who are living in the park on occasion already. Next, please. So I just put together a quick aerial to give you a little bit of the context of the site, so that you can see where the park is in the lower left. And immediately adjacent to it is the commercial development and the church. So the nearest housing is the Cypress Cove townhouses, and those are separated from the park by this band of commercial development. In addition, the park is recessed below the grade of the adjacent developments. So it's kind of down in a hole, which means we have to address flooding as a very real issue. But, and so we're going to use very durable materials, and the stage is going to be elevated and things like that. But I just wanted to give you that context. Next, please. You all know this, but here are some views of the existing park, you know, including the entry signage, which is pretty weak from the street. One of the things we heard from a lot of people is, where's Carter Park? So we're going to make more of that. The walkways aren't in great shape, and they're not lit, so we heard some people say that it's a little scary at night. There's just a stair down. We're going to work to improve accessibility for access and seating in the park. Then you have a slope right now that suggests that an amphitheater could work there. And I'll show you in a few how it does. And then the main thing is, you have this gorgeous grove of redwoods, which are not indigenous to the site. They were planted by the city, but they've grown in beautifully, and it gives the park its real character. Next, please. So this slide just simply shows you the outline of the property, and you can see there's very little existing development. Mainly, there's a little circular stone wall. There's a stairway that goes down, and then there are a couple paths on the site. There's lawn, and then there's the redwood planting. Next. Based on the initial information we got from the consulting firm that did the biotic report, we were able to identify the edge of the riparian zone and overlay a 50-foot setback onto the site from that zone. So we'll be working with all of this. Next, please. Here we go. So this is our current, and it's probably round four already, of the site plan. And if you look closely, you can see we're going to redevelop the entry area off Main Street. Then we're going to create a new path along the edge of the parking lot. And the parking lot is, you know, on the commercial properties side. Then we're going to create new ramps and stairs, with multiple ramps and stairs, down into the site, as well as a vehicular ramp, so that small vehicles can come down to service the stage and for city maintenance. And then, in addition to the, the large stage, which you can see we're building with a little backstage building behind it, all sized in accordance to the information we got from the performing arts groups, mainly Shakespeare in the Park. Opposite that, we have a large lawn area. Then we have a stepped amphitheater. And up above that, we have a little sloped lawn area that can be overflow seating for larger event like the Summer Zen Music Festival. To the, well, it's left on the screen there of the amphitheater is a second small building that houses restrooms and a concession ticket stand in a permanent building. It still won't be enough restroom facilities, so we'll need to continue to rent porta potties and put them up in the office parking lot as they're done right now. But this will, on an everyday basis, provide nice park restrooms for people who use the park. So next slide, please. This is just a little enlargement that shows you that central area of the park. And to the right of this is where we have our playground, and you'll see the idea for the playground is really exciting, because we're going to utilize the slope as a basis for a natural slide and some climbing structures and all of that. But you can see the stage, you can see the drop-off road coming down. We've got seating for roughly 100 to 150 people on the lawn, and then around 200 people in the amphitheater steps. And it depends on if they bring their own chairs, or if they just sit next to each other on the steps. But with the lawn behind it, there's the capacity to expand that for the music fest. And we've got a large, in response to some comments we got at Parker Rec, we expanded the lawn area at the bottom, so you've got a really nice area for dancing. Yes. Next, please. This is a section cut through the site, so that you can see our little backstage building, the roof over the stage that's going to have kind of a pier on each side. And between them, we'll have a little truss for hanging lighting and hanging speakers and stuff. And then you have the flat lawn, gently sloping lawn, I should say. Then the steps going up, the cross aisle, and the sloped lawn up above that, and then on top, the parking. And the whole thing ringed by the redwood trees. And the Parker, a couple of the Parker Rec commissioners and a lot of people from staff got a great sense of what this would be like if it was on steroids, because we went on a tour of Stern Grove together. And I know I've attended many concerts there over the year. It's a fantastic venue, and the character is the same. It's a sunken space surrounded by redwoods, and in that case, eucalyptus trees with a beautiful stage with the cover and the truss and the natural amphitheater seating. It's really beautiful. Next, please. This was our first sketch before we built the roof over the stage, but it just gives you a sense of what the ambiance might be like. This is probably in between our project and Stern Grove in scale, but it gives you a sense of what this natural seating with the stage and the little platform on the roof of the restroom building is going to look like, where you can get a great view down into the site. Next, please. Then I just wanted to quickly run you through some examples, some sort of role models of what we're starting to look at as ideas for generating the actual components of the design. This is an entry portal, kind of like what we might do up on Main Street, and then repeat symbolically down when you get to the entry to the main stair into the site. Next. Next. Here's an example of the type of lighting we might do along the paths, so that it's not something that's any kind of an imposition on neighbors, but that it does give you a nice low-level path illumination, so you'll feel safer. Next. Here are people watching the play from on their flat lawn area, bringing their chairs. Next. And here we are again. Next one. And here's the amphitheater. And we're talking, we may do astroturf, because it is a lot of maintenance, and we need to keep that in mind, too. But we'll weigh the different options. There may be a maintenance-free ground cover that will also work well on there. Next. Here's the idea of the playground sort of nestled in the trees. And this is sort of the lower part of the playground, which is the more standard equipment. Next. And here's our idea for the little slope, that we can have a slide coming down and a little climbing structure going up it, so that we can take advantage of that little hillside going down into the site and activate it through the play of kids, especially kids who might be living right there at Cypress Cove, or whose parents might come for dinner at the shopping center and just have a little place to go after. Next. And then picnicking under the redwoods. What a beautiful thing that's going to be. Next. And the last thing I wanted to point out is our solidarity path. There had been a promise a good number of years ago to create a solidarity grove of redwoods. And what we realized is, we already have the grove of redwoods, but let's make them accessible by creating a beautiful natural path through them with some interpretive signage, some dedicated signage, and then maybe a bench or two, or just even some tree stumps that people can sit on along the way. Next. I'm zipping, I apologize, but I want to get us through this. We are addressing the neighbors' concerns. You know, for example, regarding noise, first off, there have never been complaints except when somebody yelled during one of the Macbeth scenes, and somebody called the police because they thought someone was getting hurt. Otherwise, there have never been noise complaints from the park. But we've gotten a proposal from Charles Salter, who's the best acoustical and noise consultant in the Bay Area, and we have the proposal in hand now. I got it to the city a couple days ago, to do a noise assessment, to come, see how much noise the plays generate, how much music, the, how much noise music in the park generates, and then do computer modeling based on the actual grade, locations, things in between the housing and the site, to get a good sense of what the noise impacts would be, and propose mitigations, like maybe a few more trees being planted at the top of the site to deal with it. Next. The big issue that was raised was parking. And again, there have never been parking complaints. Parking hasn't been a problem, but the neighbors are concerned. So it's kind of a double whammy of identifying places people can park and then educating them in advance that this is where they should go park. We're going to have bike, we'll put some additional bike racks down in the park, for sure. We found in the survey, most people walk to the park. Minimal bike in the responses we got. Cars came in second, but it was way lower than people who walk there. And, yes.
Mr. Mayor, we need to extend the meeting again.
I move that we extend the meeting to 11:45. On favor? Aye.
I am just about done. But we are doing a parking count with staff, with some of the staff interns. We're going to see how many parking spaces are available within a five-minute walking radius, within a 10-minute walking radius. And then we're going to look at even the idea of if we need a shuttle on the big event days to come from some of the remote lots. But it's an easily addressable problem. And as far as traffic goes, we can do temporary signage that says road closed, and we can deal with it in that way. Next, please. So we're really excited about this plan. I was even more excited to hear about the potential of a grant. Our schedule is that we're working to complete our 40% design documents in August. Then we're going to have a cost estimate done. Then we'll be able to come back to you. We're also already going to the planning department, and we've had meetings with Jill and Scott to go over what the application process will need to be and get the ball rolling right away, so that we can be working on things simultaneously to move this project forward for you. Next one. Thank you. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much.
And we, we recognize that with everything else going on tonight, it would have been nice to do this at another meeting, but because we're on such an aggressive schedule, and now with the grants available, we felt like it was a good opportunity to get this in front of you, allow you to have a chance to see it, provide some input. Because when we bring back the 40% drawings, you know, that's going to be pretty close to final, is our expectation. And we've, we've really heard from everybody but you at this point. Now, you've had other presentations and provided some feedback, but we'd love to get your feedback and be able to incorporate that and get these 40% drawings done. And if you remember to go to full construction drawings, so we're a couple hundred thousand dollars into this process at this point, to go to full construction drawings is probably another $400,000. And again, before you make the decision to move forward with that, you'll have cost estimates, you'll have a timeline, and we'll have an idea of, you know, what kind of grant funding might be available.
First of all, it's beautiful. Two quick things. A concern that was raised by someone else I wouldn't have even really thought of until they raised it. In terms of the playground, and I'm looking at this picture with all these beautiful slides, and it's down the hill. You know, more typically, a playground is observable from the street level, right? And, you know, parents often are with their kids, but sometimes kids, especially from that neighborhood who are a little older, might not be accompanied. And there would be no, you know, visibility from the street about what's going on in that playground. So that could be a concern from some parents about a kid's safety issue. So just something to put on our radar screen if others might, you know, bring that up later.
Just for clarification, so nothing in the park is visible from the street here? So, okay.
But I'm saying, a playground.
But from the parking lot and from the walking paths, it would be visible?
Yeah.
But, right, not driving by, or?
Yeah, so just something to think about, what we, if, how to address that. The other thing is, you know, it's a beautiful, large park. And just based on all the things that have come up in the last month or so, it might be interesting to get some input, you know, from the sheriff's department about security and what things in the construction design might enable, or things to, you know, be thinking about ahead of time that we might not be thinking about right now, just to make things secure and safe, yeah.
And we, we can definitely do that. Some of the thinking, I think part of the reason people are really keen on a playground there is really activating this site on a more consistent basis, so that, you know, what makes an area safe, a lot of use by a lot of members of the community. And then the lighting, I think, will also be important. It won't be intrusive lighting, but it will just create some visibility where there hasn't been visibility before.
And I was thinking more maybe about after hours, you know, because it's kind of a paradise for teenagers at night, so, yeah.
I was wondering about seating for people that come, just come to use the park to look at the redwoods. That's one thing. So benches, some sort of permanent seating. Also, chess tables or checker tables is a thought. I don't play either, but I know a lot of people do, and you might get more people coming, more older people coming, too. And then the third thought I had was dogs. What's with the dogs? Are we going to have dogs in the park?
I would pretty much guarantee it, you know.
Yeah. So is there a way we can deal with the dogs?
Well, I think the revised design actually is going to make it a little less attractive to dogs than it currently is, because the current layout, just being big, open, grass, and not a lot of active use otherwise. It is a place where I know people like to take their dogs to tick them off leash and throw a ball around and stuff.
Yeah.
The, the way this is being designed, it's going to be more. The way this is being designed, it's going to be much more functional as the performing arts piece. I'm not sure we're going to have the same issues with dogs. I think people will want to walk their dogs on leash, but I don't think it's going to be as conducive to just dogs running around. Is that what your concern is more than anything?
I don't know, I'm thinking about people that want to take their dog. There aren't very many places in town where people can take dogs, and this would be very attractive to people. So you might have a lot of dog traffic, so maybe a dog run or a dog kennel, or, I don't know, a little area for dogs.
The kennel wouldn't work, because it would need to be fenced, but I think having a dog poop station would make sense, you know, with little bags. As a new dog owner, I can attest to that. And I think we make it friendly but not overly inviting seems to be the thing to do.
So I'm assuming that this is fully ADA compliant, but are there any special features, like for, you know, wheelchairs or?
Yeah, there's a couple. The first thing is, and it is an ADA requirement, but we're striving for more than that. In our amphitheater, there's actually going to be spaces for wheelchairs and companion seating at three different levels. So at the top of the steps, at the bottom of the steps, and then at that middle path. So there's multiple options for people in wheelchairs to sit in different locations. We're going to have accessible restrooms down there. We're going to have two accessible, well, two accessible routes to the midpoint of the amphitheater, and then one accessible route down to the bottom, because it's a long way down, and we don't want to do handrails. So it's a 1:20 slope. But, you know, we strive for universality in our design. The play surfaces will be accessible, playground equipment will be accessible, the picnic tables will have the accessible seating components and everything, and we're going to do everything we can to make it welcoming for everybody.
Right. My only other comment was going to be about interpretive signage, but you actually ended up addressing that. And I don't know if you had attended our 60th anniversary this evening at the library?
I actually snuck my dinner then.
Okay. So Larkin Evans, whose grandfather was John Carter of John Carter Park fame, her father was the first mayor of Half Moon Bay, and he was also an educator, an outstanding educator, is what I gather. And so I was thinking, you know, that some interpretive signage, some educational component would be, you know, very suitable at that site, you know? You would want some anyway, but I think, given who he was, I think it's even more special to.
Love it.
Yeah.
And we have a great signage to tie in.
I thought of that, you said founder, the founder thing that you had.
Thank you very much. It really looks very exciting. It's a, I walk my dog there, so I know it's very dog, it has been dog-friendly, and I think it'll still be there. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item is 2019-2020 sewer service charges, and we need to have a public hearing about the new service charges.
I'm happy to say nothing.
I open the public hearing on sewer service charges. Hearing no public comment, I close the hearing.
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay adopting the fiscal year 2019-20 sewer service charges for properties served by the Half Moon Bay Sanitary Sewer System.
Second. I've been advised that we should have a roll call for this. Jessica?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Aye.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
Aye.
Mayor Rhabat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I think at our next meeting in August, maybe you could give us a little presentation on the Coastal Cities Workshop, the Cities and Counties Workshop at the Coastal Commission?
Sure, I'll be glad to.
And I'll give you an update on the flood and sea level rise district.
Okay. Yes. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.